Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting, Wednesday, April 27th, 2022, at 8:30 a.m. At this time, as usual, we're going to start with our invocation and a pledge. Today's invocation is by Pastor Don Steriano of Kingdom Life Christian Church. If we could please stand. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Just a couple of comments being that we're honoring our police officers today before I pray, if I could. The affections of my heart burn for our local and national police officers in all law enforcement agencies. In this present climate where there is much negative criticism and notable amount of dislike towards police, I would like to affirm us all that this is not the sentiment of the majority of Americans. As in any occupation, there will unfortunately be the few who cast disdain on the wide-ranging canvas across our nation of noble policing. To my beloved Bradenton Police Department family and all who wear the gallant shield of service and protection, from our chief to our senior command staff, to our seasoned veterans and the young officers filled with promise, and to every support department, you're loved, you're significant, you're needed, and we celebrate you today. We thank the heavenly Father for you today. You are heroes, you are divine agents of the Almighty God to sustain order on the earth. In part, you are vessels to help bring to pass the portion of the Lord's prayer for His kingdom to come and His will to be done on earth as it is in heaven. Would you bow your heads, please? Father of heaven and earth, I lift up our valiant law enforcement officers before you now. I ask that you and all of heaven would take notice and honor this prayer for these who have vowed and dedicated their lives to serve and protect your children on the earth whom you so dearly love and cherish. I pray that your mighty hand and outstretched arm would go before them in the battle for justice, anointing them as your ambassadors of divine order, so to foil the deeds of those who plot evil. I ask of you, Holy Spirit, to envelop each of them with the peace of Christ that transcends understanding, guiding them with the wisdom of Solomon as they guard the citizens of our nation. Grant them the courage and the strength of King David to defeat the Goliaths of wrongdoing and also impart upon them the loving kindness of David the Shepherd, to serve with compassion and a gentle hand, discerning when to be as a lion and when to be as a lamb. As they continue to deploy to their unselfish assignments, I declare Isaiah, Chapter 54, verse 17, over them all, "That no weapon formed against you shall prosper, and that every tongue which rises against you in judgment shall be condemned. This is the heritage of the servants of the Lord, and their righteousness is from me," says the Lord. I pray that you would dispatch and assign warring angels of great might and power to protect them from harm. I declare over them a long and strong and blessed and prosperous and fruitful life. I pray that you would grant an overwhelming peace to their loved ones, reminding every mother and father, wife and husband, son and daughter, that you, the Creator of the universe, has them all in His mighty hands. I pray this all in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Thank you. And would you join all of our police officers in the pledge today? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation, a life-saving award. I'm going to ask Assistant Chief Kramer to come up, and obviously, we all know that he is retiring next month, so being his last police week, I'm going to ask him to read the life-saving award presentation.
Proclamation.
Proclamation, yes, sir.
First, thank you, Mayor, council members. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it follows is Police Week, and whereas the members of Florida law enforcement agencies play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our citizens, and whereas it is essential that all Florida citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department and the members of our department recognize their unwavering commitment to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression and intimidation. And whereas it is appropriate to commemorate police officers, past and present, who have dedicated their service to their communities and demonstrated utmost courage in preserving the rights and security of all citizens, and whereas on May 15th, we honor all peace officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Now there be resolved that I, Mayor Gene Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 15th, 2022, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and May 15th to 21st, 2022, as Police Week, and encourage all citizens to participate in activities honoring our police and peace officers. Signed, Mayor Gene Brown, Mayor, April 27th, 2022.
Thank you. And I got a little bit ahead there in the presentation for the proclamation, but thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, and obviously, there'll be more to come for talking about that part of it with you, your retirement, but thank you for reading that today.
Thank you, sir.
And just to speak on that for a moment, this is an occasion every year that we honor both the officers and personnel that comprise Bradenton Police Department and police departments nationwide who are able to stand here, but as well, those who are unable. This has been a horrific year in law enforcement. The deaths by gun violence is at an all-time high, higher than even decades ago, when we saw tremendous spikes. Thankfully, by the grace of God, we have not experienced that within this city, and I will hope and pray until I leave this earth that we never will. But I will tell you, it's not for lack of our officers going out there each and every day and risking their lives to help our citizens and to save our citizens. And so for that, from the bottom of my heart, I thank them all for what they do and respect them immensely for what they do. And on that vein, I'd also like to take this opportunity to present a life-saving award. So I think actually you all can remain standing because this is that much of an occasion, but I want to take this opportunity to read you something, but first introduce the family and introduce the officer and have her step up here. Officer Jessica Serrignano is here today with her family, and I want to read you why that is. On January 29th, 2022, at approximately 02:22 hours, Officer Serrignano was traveling home from an off-duty detail northbound on US 41 in Palmetto. She observed significant debris consistent with a motorcycle accident. She pulled over and strategically positioned her police cruiser to ensure the safety of those on scene and to check on injuries. Upon exiting her vehicle, she observed a female victim laying in the middle of the roadway in the southbound lane. She noted the female's leg was decapitated above the knee and that she was losing a large amount of blood. She began rendering aid by first applying her issued tourniquet near the victim's hip to stop the bleeding. The female had a weak pulse and then appeared to stop breathing, so she started performing chest compressions. After a few chest compressions, the female gasped for air and became semi-alert. Officer Serrignano then observed a male victim near the curb laying on his right side. She went to check for signs of life with no pulse detected. She repositioned him on his back, then found a weak pulse. His left leg was dislocated with protruding fractures. She noted he too was losing a large amount of blood, so she took off his belt from around his waist and utilized this as a makeshift tourniquet in an attempt to stop the bleeding. Officer Serrignano also noted a significant head fracture and applied pressure in an attempt to stop the bleeding. The male began to make gurgling sounds, so she began chest compressions until they stopped and she could detect a pulse. Manatee County EMS arrived on scene and took over medical treatment. The accident was investigated as a hit-and-run traffic crash by Florida Highway Patrol. FHP later located the vehicle involved. The family involved in this incident is seated here today. Unfortunately, their father, the father of several of these children, is the male victim that I speak of, and unfortunately, despite everything that she did that day, is unable to join us. But thankfully, they still have a mom. And we're happy to have you here, and we're happy that our officer was in the right place at the right time and had the courage and the training and the ability and the resilience to do what she needed to do to save your life. And so thank you for joining us, and to Officer Serrignano, thank you for representing our badge so proudly. It's an honor to present this life-saving award to you, where it's proudly and where every day you come to work because you've earned it. So thank you very much.
Any council want to make any comments? Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What our officers do every day can make this kind of difference, and they are willing to put on the uniform and come into our community every day, ready, willing, and able to make the difference. We can't thank you enough for being willing to do a job that many can't do, that many aren't gifted enough to do, and that many would not choose to do. So to every officer with the Bradenton Police Department, as well as officers throughout this country, please know you are needed and you are deeply appreciated.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes, I reiterate Mrs. Barnaby's comments because I've had experiences the same with the loss of my first wife in a tragic accident 23 years ago. She was killed right in front of me, about five feet, and emergency services, the fire department rescue was there timely in a helicopter with police looking for her body, which we couldn't find that day. And so I went to you, ma'am, and my condolences are with you. I know you're going to suffer emotionally and grieving, and you'll go through stages of grieving, which will be anger, you know, crying, and it will last for some time. I'm sorry. And I don't think anybody in this room knows what that grieving process is like unless they've personally experienced, and ma'am, I have. And I wish you the best. If you ever need to reach out to me, please do so because I've been there and I've done that. But I appreciate you, your family. I know it's hard, and if there's anything the city can do, that, you know, we're here for you, and I'm here for you as a council person that understands your pain. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and obviously, from our hearts to your heart and your family and your children, you know, obviously, the city's there. We're very fortunate to have officers like we do, and especially in that moment to come out and do what needed to be done and to take care of that. And obviously, being such a young, newer officer with us also to show the training that she had and the willingness to get out there and, you know, all the time with possible danger to our officers. So, you know, we appreciate what they do every day, not just in a week and a time. And as we've always said, this council and the mayor's office will never make an effort to defund the police or do that because they're important, all of our safety officers and that. So our family, my family, my wife and my kids, an entire family are praying for, you know, obviously, your recovery, as well as your recovery from losing your husband. So thank you, and we appreciate you all being here today, and it's an honor. So thank you.
And then just very briefly, we have a representative here from Attorney General Ashley Moody's office. We sent a copy of this award, and she felt it was important enough. She wasn't able to be here to send a representative, so if you wanted to just say an award or two?
Jessica Caruso?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members, and thank you, Chief, for everything. On behalf of Attorney General Ashley Moody's office, we just would like to show our support to Officer Serrignano and the family members that are here today, as well as all law enforcement members of the Bradenton Police Department. We really appreciate everything you guys do to keep our communities safe. Thanks.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And let's just, not only for the family, but for Officer Serrignano, but for everybody within the Bradenton Police Department, let's just give them one more round of applause as we exit.
We'll give them a moment for to kind of clear the room before we get going. At this time, we'll go to citizen comments. Citizen comments will be accepted at this time on any non-agenda items. Comments will be accepted on the public hearing agenda items at the appropriate time. You'll have three minutes. Come up, please state your name and address, and we will have three minutes. So first, I have David Levin. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Morning.
Morning. Scott. Rob's not here, but I'll... Morning, Scott, or Rob. 105 22nd Street West, Bradenton, Florida, 34205. I wanted to talk today about, I think Blalock Walters has to recuse itself from the Salem City Hall. I think. Is that correct? And I think that's a pretty big deal because, you know, if we're hiring an attorney for the city, and this is a deal that's going to be ongoing for a while, they should be able to work on this deal. And I'm not sure if Conflict Council's here today? Or is Conflict Council here today? On the phone, maybe? No? Okay. So, you know, they should be because this is going to be ongoing for a while. So the person that is Conflict Council's, you know, they should be on the phone, ready, available to respond to something like this, perhaps. So, and I'm not exactly sure why we don't want to poach Scott. I mean, he's a board-certified, you know, government attorney, and he's very handsome. I mean, he's only... The engagement letter only has him at $200 an hour, which is ridiculous. Look at him. I mean, come on. But I think he's maybe making more since then, I hope, but it is not something I was able to readily find. So, and I was wondering if maybe city council should have voted on a raise. Or like I said, I think the guy's worth more than $200 or $300 an hour, but that's up to you. I don't really need the rest of my time to go into it, but I would like to say that there is, you know, I think, a good reason to take him away from Blalock Walters, which is because Blalock Walters has kind of left a bad taste in the mouth of some other, well, members of the community, specifically related to, and this isn't in Bradenton, but it's right across the river, in Palmetto. And specifically, what I'm talking about is LMA, and even more specifically, is the letter, which was... Some people call it fabricated, and some people just... This is the letter I'm talking about is the water bill for LMA, which some people consider what may have been the camel, the straw that broke the camel's back and caused that school to lose its charter, which I know is, a lot of people say, "That wasn't it, has nothing to do with it." But, you know, the perception is that it was. And so the perception is that Blalock Walters had his hand in that and that, you know, a lot of people don't trust the city's, the city attorney. Not you, Scott. Look at you. So anyway, that's my time, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have next Karen Wiley. Willie, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Mayor and council. I am speaking on behalf of the Florida Native Plant Society, local Saranowa chapter. I wrote a letter on March 29th to Jim McClellan about the plantings at the Riverwalk Extension with some quite specific information, and hadn't heard back... Well, I heard back from him several times, but he said he hadn't heard from your engineers. So I wrote a letter a week ago, on April 21st, and copied you all, so I hope you have that, asking for some specific things because the plants were planted in the wrong place, some of them are not going to make it, and some of them are completely non-native. And we went through quite a large charrette process where we were assured that there would be native landscaping, and we, at the Native Plant Society, have offered assistance. So I'd just like to know how this might be remedied.
Okay. It would be continuing the conversation with Mr. McCollum, and I don't know...
We have not heard...
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Okay. Well, it's not the appropriate time to do it in our... So we don't debate here. It's comment three minutes and then get with Mr. McCollum, and we can get individually with...
Okay. So do you have the...
It's concerning a neighboring property that has concerns.
But we'll get that at the end of the public comment.
She won't be here to do it.
I won't. I have to leave.
It's just, just enough when it's over with, so...
Okay. So a couple...
I believe the citizen should be heard in his...
And we will be at the appropriate time.
...answer to by this council.
This is where... You have three minutes, ma'am, please.
Okay. So are we going to... Is this going to come up later today? No?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right. Next, we have Susie Copeland.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Susie Copeland, citizen here in the city of Bradenton. And I'm speaking today about a property at 402 10th Avenue Drive West, and I believe the Copelands, we are not related, appeared before this council last year. They did not have the funds to repair his mother's home, nor the money to demolish. And I think the city started negotiations, and it's my understanding that a contractor was hired, deposit was made on them demolishing the house. It's the length of time that it's taking to tear that eyesore down in the community. So I would like to see some quicker movement in ensuring that that house is removed. In our community, there are a lot of boarded-up homes and dilapidated homes. We'd like to see those being cleaned up and by whatever means. The family did not have the finances, so the city agreed to demolish and lean the property. And we'd like to see that accomplished sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rodney Jones. Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Rodney Jones, 213 16th Avenue West. We're in April, almost end of April. I'm still requesting a meeting with our mayor about some misconduct that I discovered in the Bradenton Police Department. They've managed to do a wonderful job of kind of boxing me in where I don't have anywhere to go. They've limited you guys from asking questions for the first time, and I think since I've been coming down here, and I've at least attended 50 meetings, and I've got a year and a half worth of videos before I've arrested, that everybody was able to go over the three minutes, and the council was able to ask questions. And I know we're tightening up our policy since I started coming down here, talking about things, but it's all about leadership, Mr. Brown. You know, I saw beautiful ceremony of police officers. I've worked with many of those police officers on the street where it matters. I live in one of the higher crime neighborhoods in the city of Bradenton, and I've had a beautiful relationship with those officers, and every last one, I'm going to tell you, never had a problem with me on the streets, very cooperative, and have always worked with them. So now that we have a problem, I'm finding it difficult time getting my complaint heard. What Melanie has managed to do is avoid responding to my complaint now for three years, and then they're saying, "Well, it's three years old." Yeah, it's three years old because you won't respond to it. You won't respond to it because it involves corruption between Melanie, Josh Kramer, Officer Capores, Officer Johnson, and Officer Mahoney. I've got nothing against law enforcement officers. Like I said, I work with them every single day and will continue to do so as I have in the past. I'm only asking to be treated fairly and to be given equal due process, just as everyone else, and I really feel like it's boiling down to an issue of race. I mean, we can't come up with any other explanation of why a citizen should not be able to meet with an elected official other than race and other than the fact that we have discovered what we have, and we have definitive proof of corruption, and the mayor is sitting up there, and some of you are sitting up here silently, especially you, Mary Ann, I'm most disappointed in because you've always pretended to be a friend of our community. So now it's time for you to stand up, and you won't. You know, so I appreciate Patrick Roth for at least defending the public comment and the way things have been done, the practice of the city has been done for 16 years, like you said, so I do appreciate you speaking up, and I do appreciate you for apologizing for the behavior that I've experienced here. And Mayor, you're just digging a hole for yourself. I don't know if you've ever heard of civil rights violations, but we have some protections in the Constitution to keep people from doing exactly what you're doing to me when I come down here to speak. You know, I just don't understand it. I think it's a shame. I think it's an embarrassment to the city, and I think it shows very poor leadership on your part when you get confronted with something, a difficult subject matter, you run from it, and it's an embarrassment, Mayor. So I look forward to meeting with you when your schedule permits, and I want to thank you again, Mr. Roth, for your leadership and at least speaking up when the time came. I appreciate you, brother.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next, we have Larry Grossman. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. Larry Grossman, 10935 Bristol Bay Drive in Bradenton. I'm representing myself in this venture, and my message is really on the board. And I made a presentation to the commission, the Manatee County Commission, last week, and they said, "Well, if we ever rebrand our county..." Yeah, we'll consider it. Well, time to rebrand is right now because there's a lot of problems with manatees in Florida and in terms of their mortality, starvation. There's an effort by the Congressman Buchanan to put the manatees on the endangered species list. If you want to see manatees, all you have to do is go down the street to Palmasola Boulevard, the boat place, Puerto Sueno, I think it's called, and there's manatees there every day, so you can really see what you'd be saving. But this is just a suggestion. I can't, couldn't understand why you have a county called Manatee County, but you don't have manatees in the logo because a lot of people don't know what manatees are. They're coming from all over the world here. I met some kids from Iowa, and they were watching the manatees, and they were just thrilled because they'd never seen anything like that. So we have something very precious here in Manatee County in Florida, and we should make every effort to preserve their survival, their existence, and so that we can enjoy them for us and for future generations. So it's, I'm not, I guess the only ask, and I made a presentation to Holmes Beach, I said, "Well, what do you want from us?" Well, perhaps a resolution and support of consideration of amending the Manatee County logo to include actual manatees, a depiction of manatees, in the logo. And I told the commission that this doesn't have to be a wholesale change, it could be done gradually, so you could, you know, reduce the cost, but really, the intent is to put the manatee in Manatee Counties. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other cards for citizen comment. Mr. McCollum, I'd like to ask you to come up and give us a little update on the plants. I know I've seen some emails back and forth. Unfortunately, I guess she had to leave, she couldn't wait, but we can at least get it, information out there.
Yeah, I have sent her inquiries and her suggestions to Kimberly Horn and asked them for a formal response. I've yet to receive that. I just text them again to see if they can get one to us, but I anticipate having a formal response and being able to meet with them on site and talk about that.
And I am...
Hold on, sir, hold on. Hold on, sir, hold on, it's, you know, decorum here. So are you, anything else that, other than the formal response, will come back and you'll email it out to everybody, obviously get to this council?
Correct.
Is there any questions by the council?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders? We've got a decorum and protocol here.
Mr. Mayor, that is my ward. Please let me speak about it.
Sir, you need to address the chair to get recognized. We, we have a protocol here, please address the chair and then I will recognize you so you can speak.
Well, we changed that protocol, which we need to discuss as, as a policy and procedures, which I haven't been able to get on the agenda for months, so let's please do that. I'm very familiar with that, I asked this lady to come down and see if council could help her. Obviously council can't help her because council can't speak. There is, this, this is not an emergency thing to have right now with those plants. The neighboring entity is the Reflections Manatee, which is a historic area, and these plants, and I've witnessed them, I walked this, this past Saturday, you should have done the same, Mr. Mayor. And these plants will grow very tall and so they will, it will block their view from the reflections of the park, which they intend to use for miscellaneous services that they provide in historic nature. So they will have to be moved out or cut out or not have anything. Is it urgent today? No. But, and you and I have discussed this at length, that we will do this. Right now, we're trying to build a park, let's get it done, let's go. It's not an issue today, but it will be probably 12, 24 months from now. And this, this lady should have been addressed today.
And, and I have talked to our landscaping ground superintendent, gotten some recommendations from him, as well as some things, he doesn't necessarily agree with everything that was presented, has some comments and does agree with some of them as well.
I understand, and this is not about disagreement, this is about visualization of our park in our neighborhood, which is my neighborhood and my constituents, and I ask them to attend, to be heard, and they can't be heard, and I am very concerned about this.
Well, we will definitely have a...
Not from the standpoint of the plants, the standpoint of our citizens, we address our citizens when we can, and that's what this council is for and should be for, to allow people to come here and vent what they want and us give them an answer that's satisfactory so they don't have, you know, this meeting is at nine o'clock in the morning, people work, people have other things to do. So they've taken off work to do this because we don't want to have an evening meeting. So let's, let's change our ways and do what the public wants.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, Jim, I'm just curious, because this is an issue that I know I've been hearing for a long time. I mean, what is our policy with native plants? I know that we, we put, you use them, I, I was assuming, we use them whenever possible, sometimes they're not available or we can't. I mean, this is what I've always assumed is what, what our policies have been. And of course, we're working with the landscape architects and all, so what, what is our criteria for this? I'm just, this is new to me, I, I know it's, it's kind of, nobody wants to slow the park up? I don't, I'm not opposing that.
No. My personal knowledge of, of the, the criteria, I, I can't speak to right now, so I would have to get that for you.
Okay, well, it is, it is something that, it's been reoccurring the whole time I've been in office, so we probably should have some form of policy to at least, whenever possible, use native plants. Whenever possible, it's not always possible.
Ms. Coker?
I mean, the only thing I would say is that we've got an architect and hopefully we'll get a response from them. And I, of course, want to see as much native as possible, but I don't want it to be at the complete expense of aesthetics. I think sometimes it can go too much to the native and not know aesthetics there. And that could be what's going on here, I don't know, I'm not familiar with that. But I just, if we're gonna set a policy, I don't want it to be strictly native.
Didn't say that.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, I want to weigh in on that.
I'm not asking for a policy.
Thank you, Mr. McCollum. And, and yes, I was there Saturday and walked the whole property, talked with the new executive director, have actually worked with Mr. McCollum on a couple other things this week, even more to Reflections. So it is important to all of us in this community, and it's all of our park and wards and communities. So another question is, Ms. Singer, can you come up and, and do you have any knowledge on that? Because I know that's been something going on for a long time with the teardown of the Copeland's house.
Yes.
Is there anything that you know of that? I know it was, it went through and it was approved and they finally signed all the contracts.
Off the top of my head, I'm afraid I don't know.
Right, yeah, we signed everything and that. Mr. Rudy Sel, do you have any, any other information on that? That other than everything went through and they came down and signed?
Right, that was last I was aware of it.
Okay, yes, sir, just one second.
I can find out for you by the end of the meeting.
All right, Mr. Sanders?
Yes, I'm very aware of it, this was not, this last year, I believe it was 2019 or 2020, we'd have to go back and look at the record. This house was a nuisance to the neighborhood. We agreed to tear it down and I think we was gonna lean it. And Mr. Rudy Sel, you're very familiar with it because you prepared the documents for them to sign. At, at the last time I'd heard, that they weren't showing up to sign it, I don't know if it's because they were elderly or, or what the reasons was, but it's available for them to sign, tear it down today, is that correct?
My recollection, and this has been several months, but they ultimately did come in and sign all the documents.
It's been not only several months, it's been a couple of years, I believe it was nineteen, 2019, 2020, but it, well, it doesn't matter when it was, it doesn't matter if it was last month, period. It should be done, and if they've signed it, why haven't we complied with this?
And that's what Mrs. Singer will find out right away and get back to us at the moment, so. All right, any other comments? All right, moving forward, go to consent agenda.
Miss, excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
Council, we'd like to remove item A and move it under new business, under Mr. Perry's section. And also, the public event, item G, has been canceled.
Okay.
So we would like approval of items B through F and H through J.
And I'd like to pull a couple.
Okay, Mr. Sanders?
A was one of them, since you already solved that, that's, that's good. B, administrative services. D, finance. E, planning. And J, public works.
We have a motion to approve the...
I have a motion to approve the rest of the agenda.
Consent agenda of C, F, H, and I. As noted, A will be moved to new items under Mr. Perry's report. G has been canceled. And B, D, E, and J are pulled by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to do what I just said. And we will start the vote in Ward four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Okay, it's approved, five to zero. Mr. Sanders?
Okay, A is off. Administrative services, B. I don't know why we're doing this, I'd like to have explanation why we're moving some employees from merit board oversight to administrative oversight, which, and explain to the, to us and the public why, what the difference between a merit board employee versus an administrative employee that has a different set of rules. And in that, there is a, the clerk is included in that, and the clerk is totally protected by our charter, which has, is an assignment that is actually voted on by council. So she, she already has that protection, I don't know why she would be included in that at all.
Mr. Perry?
Mayor, Counselor?
Can you pull your microphone?
Of course. The proposed resolution basically doesn't have anything to do with oversight at all, it's a misunderstanding, if that's the contention. This is basically a matter that, that puts it into the hands of the Florida retirement system for senior management, and senior management has to be designated as senior management to go into that, that program of the Florida retirement system.
Well, that's one, one factor of which they, they would receive more funds in their retirement as a senior manager. But we've also now developed a new program to sign contracts with senior management that was instituted by Mr. Callahan before you arrived, I looked at it last night. And there are different standards of how these employees are addressed, and I've always taken a position, and counsel, correct me if I'm wrong, but this council makes policy and hires and fires department heads or thereof. And I've heard some information that bothered me that that might be changing. And I'm, I'm curious if this is a part of it? Why would you move them from, why would you move them from the merit board, like all other employees, to a, to, I believe, a situation where only maybe you have authority in their employment?
I think they have to be by designation of the Florida retirement system. Other, if they're classified within the, within the merit board, they can't qualify as senior management. And hence, as a senior manager, be eligible for that pension plan.
Are you taking away, are the council's accountability, responsibility for these people?
No, not in any way.
So I, so they still report to this council?
No, they don't report to the council, they report to the council and they report to me. May I finish, Mayor, Mr. Chairman? Thank you. They, they basically report to myself.
Right.
As the city administrator.
As administrator.
As well as we all report to the council, I'm certainly cognizant of that. I, I don't really know what you're alluding to when you say, if I'm taking away from the council's authority.
The council is the only body that can hire and fire these administrators and department heads. Is that true?
Department heads have to be confirmed by the council. They have to be approved, I believe, is what the charter says.
Hired and fired.
I, I, I don't think it says hired and fired.
Okay.
I think those are your words, since we're parsing words.
Not my words, it's, it's, I'm asking the council, if that's not their understanding, then I was told wrong, I don't know. It's always been, I remember Mr. Gallo used to sit up there and say, I never want a city administrator because I'm gonna run my own department. Now, I heard him say that 10 times if I heard him say it once, that that's the reason. He says, I, my department's my department, leave me alone. And so now that seems to be what I'm seeing. Is that...
Is there any other council comment with the, I mean, we set policy and then, you know, to confirm a department head and that, but, but again, it's, that's who you set policy and let the policy run. And I don't think, this isn't taking away any of the authority of the council that's there right now.
Well, in fact, it protects the employees that one individual cannot fire an employee, a, a serious level employee without the approval of council. Is that still true?
I don't believe that was ever true.
Okay.
That I, that, that a city administrator couldn't basically proceed and take administrative action.
I've got the documentation, I think it's...
I think the charter refers to approval of department heads, if I'm not mistaken, and I haven't reviewed it in all honesty, in preparation for this one question.
Okay, then, then let's table this to another time to where we can get a review of it, maybe a review by our council, city council, and so that we all have an understanding, because I don't have that understanding, and that, that, this is table this to another time.
That's a great idea, so we have a motion to table item B on the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All right. So are we doing this right, Mr. Rudy Sel, to table?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table. We'll start the vote in Ward five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yep.
Four.
Yes.
So it's tabled, for more information, five to zero.
Thank you.
All right, D, Mr. Sanders?
D is financial, county departments request to amend or adjust budget at this time for second quarter adjustments. One item stands out is an increase of $100,000, Mr. Perry, for improvements, capital outlay. What is that $100,000 item?
Mayor, I think I probably would best defer to Mr. Kelly to discuss the budget adjustment, it's pretty straightforward issue, shouldn't take too long.
Thank you, yes, yes, sir, Mr. Perry.
Morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning, Mr. Kelly.
That's $100,000 going towards the cops or the Girl Scout House that is for the police department, and that's been ongoing. So we're just covering that, some of that's gonna be covered by ARPA funds, but right now, until we get the final number on how much it's gonna cost in total, once it's determined, we're gonna move $75,000 out of the general fund and over to the ARPA fund to, to cover with the 75 grand.
I thought that was a, an annex police station, I've wondered about that 75,000, how you can build anything for 75,000 nowadays, is, is amazing to me. So I don't know, please, could you please elaborate on that?
Well, I'd have to ask the police.
Perhaps I could...
Yeah, Mr. Perry.
... point, Chief, please.
Sure.
It's not building, it's a remodel.
Remodel? Okay.
Yes, it's a, it's a remodel, we actually started this last year. I know a few folks are familiar with this being the old Girl Scout House on 17th Avenue, it's been around for quite some time, they wound up vacating it, it's owned by the city when it fell into a state of disrepair. We identified this as a replacement location for our District 2 office, not to the size and scale, we're gonna just house our, our traffic folks, but it's, if you see the layout of it, it's got a huge bonus room, so to speak, and we have made the decision to turn this into, we're actually calling it the cops' house.
Sounds like a great idea, I just wasn't aware of it. So $75,000 is coming out of ARPA and now, but why is there 100,000 here? Is that 175? I just want to be clear on how we're spending the money.
I'm not clear on how we, I know we've...
Mr. Perry?
We've applied for some grants.
Sure, I, I think there was some, some estimates initially on how much the improvements would cost and the actual improvements with construction, inflation, and the like, has exceeded that amount. That's what my understanding is, as it relates to the programmatic needs. Typically, when that happens, they've looked at other funding sources within the PD budget and move from line items that they don't anticipate spending into this category, so that within this category, there's adequate funding to do the remodeling improvements. Is that correct, Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
So is it 100,000 or 175,000?
I don't know, I, I don't know about the...
Because I don't know if we're talking about the improvements or, or the, the budget adjustment.
I know we did receive some ARPA funding from it, I thought that was about 35,000, and then I think we requested an additional 100,000. It's not just for repairs, it's also for programmatic needs, some furniture, whatnot, we've also applied for...
Right, I was gonna address that in a minute, but 140,000 worth of furniture?
No, no.
That's what was in the ARPA, ARPA capital improvement plan.
Well, I think that that was covering the furniture, I think what the request...
In addition to the 75.
I think the request for the larger number, we wound up having to replace the roof, we didn't anticipate doing that, we had to secure it better because we are gonna be opening it up to community events and whatnot, I know some, some different nonprofits have expressed.
I'm not questioning the project, the project sounds like a great idea, I'm just questioning the finances of it. If it was bid, is it bid out? How do you know how much it's gonna cost? Have you bid this?
We did bid, we did bid out the initial construction phase, we went through that whole process and for...
I'd like to see that, see those bids. Who ended up with the contract?
I don't, I didn't come prepared with all that information, so I know that our, I know that she has all that, so.
Do you know, Mr. Perry?
I don't.
You don't?
No.
Does anybody know?
I don't know the name of it, I know it's a, a private contractor wanted, if you're looking for a particular name, it's...
I don't know, I'm not looking for a particular name.
I don't either.
You wanna know who it is?
I don't either, I don't have that, it's...
Well, I, I would like to take this off until we get some of these things answered, if that's, if that's appropriate.
I'm, I'm more than able to give you these answers this week if all we're looking for is who did the, who did the work.
No, I wanna know what the total cost is, because it's $75,000 that was taken out of the ARPA funds. Now we have increased 100,000, it's 75, part of the 100, or is it 175? And then is there another 140 for furniture? And did we bid it? Show me the bidding process and then show me who ended up with the contract. That's, that's, that's what public policy is.
Well, that's what, that's what department directors do, and they sign off on that, but...
I'd like to know as a council person, if we've...
And I'm able to provide you that information today. I can send it out to anybody. So I would hope that we don't stop progress.
I'm ready to make, yes, I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the request.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
There's a second because I think that this kind of information could be asked of the department director prior to the meeting.
Well, but we only get this a few days before.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
No, wait a minute. A motion and a second to what?
Wait, 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 wait. Let me...
To approve.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Sanders, did you have further comment?
Motion and a second for what?
To approve item D on the consent agenda.
Yes, I have a comment. There's, I'm not finished with the items I pulled this off for.
No, 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 no. D.
We're just voting on the one.
D, yes. The D has several pages of adjustments that I haven't addressed yet. I've only addressed the number one item, $100,000. If you want to separate that off of D, I don't have a problem with that motion.
I don't have a problem with the whole thing, so.
You don't have a problem with the whole thing. I understand. I understand. I'm just, you know, watching out for the taxpayers' money, man.
And so are we all. That's a very inappropriate comment to say with it imply that others on this council are not. So we have a motion and a second.
I said I am.
Okay, I'll call the question. Can I call the question? I made the motion.
Mr. Rudisell, can she call the question?
And make a motion to call the question.
Okay, she makes a motion to call the question. Is there a second on the motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, call the question on approving D and a second. By Ms. Coker is the motioner and the second. And so we'll go right to the vote.
Vote on the...
Call the question. Okay, that will start in Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Sure.
Yes. Four. No. And five?
Yes.
The question is called, so now we go to the motion. And we'll start that vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Ward three.
Well, my comment will be with my vote that the information is provided to the councilman that's asking for it, and I vote yes.
Okay. Ward four?
No.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Carrie's four to one. Okay, Mr. Sanders, you have E, I believe, on the consent agenda.
E, I just like explanation of the vacated portion from the planning director. I'm not, I just want a clarification of what we're given an easement for. And exactly where it is, if you have a map.
It looks like Ms. Singer is going to ask Ms. Myra to come up, so that's fine. So, yep.
Excuse me. This is a request for a vacation of an old easement, old platted easement on private property. It's at 1537 Fourth Avenue East. In your packets, you have...
Yeah, that doesn't give me any landmarks there. Fourth Avenue East, I'm not familiar with that block. Where is that, like in relation to the park or whatever? Do you have a bigger map?
I can probably pull it up online if we have access, if that would make it easier.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The podium is not connected to the network, so you won't be able to connect to the internet.
Okay, I'll see if we can pull something up on it.
So this is an easement for, that the city has on private property for utilities that we no longer need?
That were actually never used.
Never used, never had? There's nothing on it and we don't?
There's nothing on it.
And Public Works has signed off this, that this is no need to the city?
That's correct.
All right.
It was an old plat from 100 years ago.
Got it.
The house was actually built over it.
Great. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve that item.
E.
E.
All right, Mr. Sanders has a motion to approve E. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coker. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward three.
Yeah.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
And two?
Yes.
They're approved, five to zero. Mr. Sanders, item J under Public Works.
J is the last one and is sovereign submerged land fee waiver lease for River Rock Boardwalk. I'd like to have Mr. McClellan explain this a little bit more. I think I understand it, but I want to make sure that I understand it fully before I vote it up.
Basically, it's an easement that we have with the state of Florida for us to be able to have the structure of the boardwalk in the waters of the Manatee River. And it's part of, it's a condition of the permit through SWIFTMUD for the construction of the boardwalk to have this easement in place. We worked out the language for the easement, I mean, for the lease, excuse me, with DEP. So they've already signed off on it and it's a...
Okay. It's only in one section, it's in one section behind the new park that we're building? Or does it go all the way up the river?
No. It's just for the section where the boardwalk is in the river. So it's basically from just east of 10th Street Court East to 14th Street.
Okay. So it doesn't carry into the Phase Two and Three of that?
Correct.
And so that also qualifies us for to put some ecological stuff in there like oyster beds and so forth? Is that not...
The oyster beds are all part of the project, yes. But the sovereign submerged land easement is specifically for the boardwalk itself.
And we were, applied for a grant for that oyster bed and we were either denied or too late on filing, or what was the situation?
I'm unaware that we got any grant applications in for it, but it is part of...
We spoke of it in the plan with Kimberly Horn, that they were applying for grants to make that an oyster bed area because there was funding at that time available. And I don't believe they applied or didn't get it.
I don't, I'm not sure of the exact process of where it fell, whether it didn't get in or didn't get approved.
Okay, but we could go back and do that.
It's still part of the project.
We can still go back and do that if there's funding available because I understand there is probably some funding out there that we can do that if we want to do that. Is that be correct? I just want to set the stage for what we can do, that we don't have to go back and get re-permitted to do that.
No, no, no.
Because I say, you know, we're already done. If we can find the money from somewhere, because there's money out there for these types of projects for the river, that we should be looking into that. That's it. Thank you. I make a motion to approve item J.
Okay, so do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item J on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll start the vote in Ward four.
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
And three?
Yes.
All right, approved, five to zero. And I agree that when I served on the Sarasota Bay Estuary and I talked with the Tampa Bay Estuary, there's a lot of grants and different things that they will work with. And I know now we have the all clams on deck. That might be an opportunity also to help revitalize some of the river. So I think there's some great funding out there that the city will definitely address and to get grants and help that out. So, moving forward, Ms. Melton?
Anyone wishing to address city council during the following public hearing will please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I guess we'll move on to Ms. Singer. Okay, Ms. Schwartz, thank you.
Counsel, good morning. Myra Schwartz, Planning Manager. Do we need to read the resolution into the record? Okay. This is a request for a special use dock. I'll read the resolution 22-11. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bradenton granting a special use permit, number SU 220786, to construct a private residential dock up to a maximum length of 650 linear feet in the R1 Single Family Zoning District at 3210 Riverview Boulevard, Bradenton, Florida, providing for severability and providing an effective date. It's a request from Tom Glancy of Duncan Dock and Seawall. He's an agent for the owner of the property, Carl Serrano, to construct a private dock. The property is located north of properties along the Riverview Boulevard adjacent to 32nd Street Northwest. It's addressed to Riverview Boulevard. You can see on the location map here that it's actually off of 32nd Street West and the river because there is an easement here, an access easement, that gives the property the Riverview Boulevard address. This is an historic address for it. The property is currently vacant. We do have a building permit into our department, or into the building department to construct a single-family home. And it was issued on January 25th. Building apartment does allow concurrent construction of a dock and a single-family home at this time. I do want to make a minor correction here in the agenda memo. If you notice, there was an error, Riverview Boulevard East. This item has been properly advertised. There are no other errors as far as the address goes. And I have received word from council that it is okay to make that correction right here at the podium. Future land use of the property is low-density residential and R1 is the zoning single-family residential. The applicant's requesting a special use permit to construct a private residential dock that's 650 feet long and 2,760 feet in area. Property is adjacent to the Manatee River at the rear of the property and so the owner does have riparian rights. The purpose of the extended length is to access navigable water, to go beyond a wide sandbar and phylasia seagrass, different kinds of seagrass. You can see the sandbar is here, your seagrass, if you can see the lines. And I do have a better image of this coming up. So the dock is to go over the seagrass and then beyond to where the depth of the water is just about four feet. The design of the dock does exceed the required side setbacks of 10 feet on both sides and the applicant has obtained a permit from FDEP and ACOE. This is an image that can give you some perspective. On the west side of town, Riverview Boulevard, you can see that there are a number of docks of varying sizes. And I believe this picture does give you some idea of your shallows and your sandbars and the necessity to either dredge, as some of these have, or extend past your shallows and your seagrass, which most of them do. And then as you go further east, excuse me, along the river, then you just don't have that buildup of sediment. And so you don't have the need to figure out how to get to your navigable water. And so while there may be options here, there is criteria from the state as to how these docks will be constructed. I did provide for you this morning some additional documentation for this, provided to me by Mr. Glancy. Two are clarifications of images that may not have shown up well in your packets. And the other is the criteria from the state by which he designs his docks. I did email it to you last night. I hope you've had a chance to look at that and see that what it requires is to find a method to preserve your fish and your sea life. So that is the reason for the extension. This is, excuse me, a diagram from the Manatee County GIS resource map. It shows the general location of your seagrass here. And that is also here, it shows up a little small here, but it's again the image, which is a survey done by Mr. Glancy to show the seagrass. And it does correlate quite well with the county map where you've got continuous seagrass here. You can see the length of the dock that I've overlaid here that does go over your continuous seagrass and then out into where there's still some seagrass that's just not as thick. And this is another county map that shows bathymetry, your water depth. The light blue you can see is zero to three feet. You've got your shallows here and it's variable as to tide. And then beyond that, it gets to about five feet. So Mr. Glancy has provided a survey as well of soundings that give you actual depths here. And while you may not be able to see it real well, I've given the depths here and I did provide you a map. I hope that you can see it. Here is an overlay of the dock. You can see the seagrass area here and it goes beyond. Where the actual dock in the boat lift, it is about 3.8 to four feet deep. And then beyond that, it goes to even less. So that's the reason in an in-depth explanation for the extra length. So as you're all familiar with our docks, we have certain criteria that we use to look at our special use docks. Some are more pertinent to those that cross right-of-way. This one, of course, is not relative to that. This is someone who has riparian rights. It's basically a simple, should be a fairly simple thing to see here. Your standards, first of all, your dock shall not be attached to a seawall or any other structure located in the public right-of-way, not applicable here. Your setbacks specified by the state are complied with in dock design, minimum of 10 feet. This dock is designed to exceed the minimum. Property owner will sign a grant of easement, not applicable to this application. The dock pure appurtenance will be compatible and appropriate with adjacent properties or other properties within the district. The dock is similar in design to the docks that are surrounding, similar in length to some of the neighboring docks, all of which have to bypass that sandbar and the seagrass in some way, shape, or form, either by extending length or dredging. There are two docks to the east, and I'll go back to the map in a minute if you like, around Fogerty Point that have similar roof covers. And this dock, the owner is requesting to put a cover over the end of the pier and the boat lift, which constitutes a superstructure. So that is part of this request as well, is to have that cover on the, over the pier. And there are other docks that have similar roofs over the terminus and the lift over to the east. The nearest neighboring docks are about, and these are just estimates from Google Earth taking a measurement on the aerial, 260 feet, 530 feet, and 580 feet long. So this dock at 650 feet is an area of the variable seagrass and shallows where the applicant feels that it's necessary to go that far. It has to be considered that each property and each location along the Manatee River does require a different length in order to access navigable water or a different access method based upon the conditions of the shallows and the seagrass. And those conditions are also subject to change over time as sediments ebb in and out. The proposed 650-foot length does meet the state and federal criteria, pardon me, that I did give to you, that aim to avoid adverse impacts to seagrass and other submerged resources. And then finally, final criteria, the dock pure appurtenance must be approved by DEP prior to issuance of building permit. This dock has received approval from FDEP and Army Corps of Engineers. So, let's see, going forward, staff does have a recommendation of approval and finds that the applicant has met the requirements for a special use permit in our land use regulations. It's recommending approval of SU 220786 with the following stipulations. These are all fairly standard stipulations for this kind of dock. Excuse me. Number one, the dock shall be kept in good working order and condition, not degrade from the value of nearby properties. Number two, lighting must be according to FDEP requirements. Any extension of water or electric service to the dock should require city right-of-way permitting. Number three, all other applicable state or federal permits must be obtained before commencement of the development. Any conditions associated with required FDEP permit will be met at the time of construction. And number four, an as-built survey will be required upon completion of the dock to ensure that setbacks are maintained with the extended length. Should the side setback be less than those approved by FDEP, ACOE, then the dock will be reconstructed as needed to meet the setback requirements. I'm happy to answer any questions. I believe the applicant is here.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council before we go to the applicant? All right, seeing none, we'll ask the applicant to come forward. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Tom Glancy from Duncan Seawall. And my address is 505 Ken Hubbard Road, Terracee, Florida, 34250. So I guess it's all been laid out pretty good. You guys did get some additional information last night that kind of shows the process and the review, things that have to be done to meet the state of Florida. And again, so you know my background, I worked for DEP for 10 years prior to coming to Duncan Seawall. I'm a marine biologist. I did do the seagrass survey out there. So when I design one of these, I know very well what it is that they're going to expect of me. We did actually have to reduce the size of this dock very, a little bit to meet what the state calls a minimum single-family residential dock by their rule. And that was basically encompassed reducing the size of the terminal platform a little bit so that it was considered then a minimum size single-family dock. bit, so that it was considered then a minimum-sized, single-family dock. We didn't have to get a submerged land lease from the state. But other than that, it was, you know, clear that we had to go out past that deep seagrass to protect it. It's a very valuable resource. So the applicant would love to be able to shave tens of thousands of dollars off of that cost to build that dock by making it shorter, but unfortunately, that's pretty much where they have to be built, so.
All right. Any questions by the council? Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you have worked with the state. You have the state permits from the Department of Environmental Protection, as well as the Army Corps of Engineers.
Yes, ma'am.
And looking at the information there, as far as the seagrass goes, there's a couple of different kinds of seagrass there. And I think we all are aware of the problems that have happened this year with the manatees and their food source being diminished. I have to say, I am concerned about the length of the dock. So to me, having to weigh the environmental concerns and the concerns of, not that I have spoken with any of the neighbors, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, and I have not had any conversation with any of the neighbors, but I am very familiar with that neighborhood. And I've lived in that neighborhood for some time. My husband actually, when the sea captain or the military person that owned the house, several owners back, was hired to go in and help the man when he was cleaning out his attic. So there was a really big, old house on that property at one point that I'm very familiar with. So I know the neighborhood, and I know that some of the neighbors feel that their view is going to be impacted by having the dock out that length, as well as the structure on the dock. So this council's going to have to look at the environmental concerns versus potential neighborhood impacts. And I just want to share that with you.
Let me talk to first, the first point about the seagrass. The types of seagrass that you have in Florida, you know, the stuff that...
I'm sorry, sir. Could you speak...
Oh, sure.
It won't pick up for the TV...
Yeah, I'm sorry. The types of seagrass we have in Florida grow in sort of zones based on the depth of water. So we have very, very fine grasses that grow in those shallows to about one foot, one and a half feet of water depth. They're not a huge food resource for manatees and so forth. And we have some other grasses that grow as you go farther out. And the grasses that are at that 300 to 600-foot range at that property are really nice, deep seagrass, phylasia. That's the main food source for these manatees. You know, the Army Corps and the DEP make you go to every length possible to avoid creating shading over those areas. Anything that traverses those can't be any more than four feet wide, and you cannot, you know, locate a boat lift, a mooring area, or a terminal platform over seagrass without then try... If you say, well, there's no other alternative, I just, you know, it goes out for 10,000 feet of seagrass, I have no alternative, then you have to do mitigation. You try to do mitigation, mitigation in Florida for seagrass has very low success rate. You have to find an area that's suitable, and they generally don't exist. You know, if there was, if it was a suitable area, grass would be growing there. So it's a very futile thing to try to chase down that. So again, this is designed to have every, you know, every minimization and avoidance. The structure that will be on the end will be just a simple roof. It's not going to be walled in. It's not going to be anything other than what is...
Simple roof, no cupola, no weather vane, no...
No. Those don't do well in hurricanes. So it'll be a very low pitch, a four-to-one pitch, a full, you know, hip roof. And again, at two, you know, 600 feet out, it always doesn't, you know, it always kind of, I'm amazed at how people say, that's going to ruin my view. To me, docks, you know, that's part of the water environment, you know? And how something's going to affect your view 600 feet out, it's, you know, four feet off the top of the water is, it's something you'll see, but it's not like, oh, my God, it's ruined, you know? So this, you know, anyway. But, you know, if we could minimize it and meet the rules, we absolutely would. Because again, it's very expensive to go out that far.
Understood.
Thank you. Ms. Coker?
Yeah, so, just so I'm understanding, so you have to go out that far to get past all those seagrasses, or you have to go out that far because you need five feet?
We have to go out that far because of the seagrasses.
Okay. I mean, and this is not on, with regard to this, I've been saying for a while now, we really like to have guidance as to, I don't feel like we need, I think five-feet depth is a lot. But if we have to go through this regardless, it has nothing to do with getting to five feet, it has to do with saving those grasses. That's a different story.
Let me just, you know, this is a bit of an aside, but let me just maintain on that five-foot. That is the established depth that they always go to, like your canals, you know, anything that's kind of a standard, you know, sort of a navigability, you know, standard, I guess you would say. So anytime, you know, you're going to redo one of your Manatee County canals, you're going to go to a five-foot of mean-low water. Now, you know, I know you guys have been dealing with a lot of trying to decide, well, how far should people be able to go out, you know? What's reasonable? Five-foot is reasonable. Beyond that is up for debate. But they should always be following the rules to get out beyond those grasses.
Can I follow up?
Sure.
So you're saying that most of those docks there are at five feet? Because I thought most of them were more like two, two and a half.
Well, no, I'm not saying that they have to get to five feet, but I'm just saying that's kind of an established, it's not an exceptional depth to expect someone to have. What has happened a lot there, and you'll see that a lot of those docks in that zone were at one time out in, you know, deep enough water. And sometimes you'll get past that sandbar and within, you know, 50 feet, boom, you got the water depth you need. If you're going to spend $185,000 to get to two feet of water, and if you went 20 feet more, you're in four feet of water that you can, you know, you can use your boat, then that's money well spent, you know? So those, a lot of times, those sandbars have moved. Now those people are calling me and saying, hey, I need to either dredge under my dock or I've got to move my dock now, you know, 50 feet farther out because, you know, I can no longer get my boat off the lift. But the location of this was strictly dictated by needing to get past those seagrasses.
And this kind of seems a little bit, mostly just this one, I'm just concerned about having all these super-long, superstructure out there, because it's not fair to let one and not another, but I feel like this might be a little bit...
Well, this follows, I guess, the topography of the landscape that goes along the whole river. And if you look at it, it's not like we have a dock that's 100 feet next to it and then a 650-foot. The one next to it kind of follows that little undulation.
And some, you know, there are some levels of permitting with the state that would allow you to have a smaller dock and not have to be as vigilant about seagrass. That's a 500-square-foot dock. That would get you basically, you know, ankle-deep water in a lot of cases. Some people want just a, an observation platform. In that case, then you have very, you know, very minimal restrictions on what you can build, but it's a very, very small structure. So anything you go above, above that, now you're into very, very distinct rules. The next permit from that is between 500 and 2,000 square feet, and that absolutely stipulates that you cannot have any structures over seagrass, you know, other than a four-foot-wide walkway.
All right. Any further questions before we go to public comment?
I had one more question, but I want the other council members to have an opportunity...
I didn't see anybody with their card up, so. Ms. Barnaby?
I'm sorry. Just one more thing. With the dock being that far out, and I noticed in your letter, you were saying that lighting would be limited to minimal lighting required to safely use the dock at night, and lighting would be switched so there would be no lights on continuously. But if you're that far out into the river, are you going to put some sort of, like, reflection stuff on it or something? Because I could see someone coming in and not being as cautious or careful perhaps as they should be, and this is a new dock on the river.
Yeah. Yeah, so that refers to just, you know, my paragraph there referred to lighting that might be, you know...
Perhaps decorative?
Objectionable, yeah, to people who, you know, from a view. But we're, our DEP permit does require reflectors on the dock out there to do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Barnaby, we'll finally get our lighted bridge. Look at it positive.
All right. So we're going to, at this time, move to public comment, open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Do we want to have...
Is there any rebuttal from the staff?
Well, anything that the staff still needs to share with us, I'm just, usually, that's what, when it can happen.
I have one, and I have one question. Were the neighbors notified at Riverview Boulevard West? Since nobody's showing up, I just want to make sure.
Yes, the advertisement and all the mailings were correct. I double-checked that.
Okay.
And it was re-advertised because we...
And it was re-advertised, yes, sir.
Because we moved this from last...
That's correct.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve Resolution 22-Lim.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Yeah, as stated earlier, you know, there seems to be an environmental reason for this extension, but also when I look at the diagram of the other map, or the other docks in the area, it doesn't stick out that much more than the others. So, and they do have riparian rights, which I always respect.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward...
Wait, I'm sorry, was the motion including the stipulations?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry. Thanks for the... Yes.
All right. Start the vote in Ward five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
All right, approve five to zero with stipulations. All right, new business by department head, city attorney and council. And the first on the list is Ms. Taylor.
Mayor, we have a couple of matters, and Ms. Taylor, and we'll be up to talk about union negotiations update. I think it's worthwhile to take a couple of minutes and tell you a little bit about our progress, a little bit about where we're at, and some of our underpinnings on that. And so we're distributing a handout, it looks like. And I'll turn it over to Lance and Nilsa at this point.
Nilsa Taylor, Administrative Services Director. Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Perry, Attorney, Rotisill. Before you today is a summary of the status of union negotiations. The city is currently engaged in contract negotiations... Ma'am? Oh, sir. Oh, sorry.
You are very well-spoken, but sometimes soft-spoken, so...
Thank you. The city is currently engaged in contract negotiations with the following unions. American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, Police Benevolent Association, Rank and File, and Lieutenant, and International Association of Firefighters, Rank and File, and Supervisory Unit. For AFSHME, two bargaining sessions were held with more planned, with more sessions planned. AFSHME proposed a three-year agreement with a $3.75 an hour increase in pay per bargaining unit employee for year one and 5% increase in years two and three. For PBA, Rank and File, five bargaining sessions were held with three more scheduled. The PBA proposed a three-year agreement with 14% increase plus step in year one and 10 and 8% in the out-years. Each step represents an average of an additional 3.75% increase. The city's most recent proposal is 3.5% plus step in year one with economic reopeners for years two and three. Please note, years two and three represent an average of 3.75% step increase. We tentatively agreed to 21 out of 40 union articles. PBA Lieutenant, one bargaining session was held with three more scheduled. The PBA proposed a three-year agreement with a 5% increase plus step for the life of the contract. Each step represents an additional 3% increase, which represents an 8% increase each year for the life of the contract. IAFF, we are pleased to inform, we have an agreement with the fire union that they are taking out for ratification vote. The Rank and File and Supervisory Union negotiations were completed in two sessions. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Williams, Assistant Director, Office of Management and Marketing Budget.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Thanks for telling my title, too, because it's long. No, that's good. Basically, it's, you know, at this point, like Ms. Nilsa said, we have, we have our fire, both Rank and File and Supervisor done. The intent is to obviously continue to work with the other unions, come to an agreement, you know, on both sides, that's both economically affordable by the city and then obviously beneficial for our employees as well. So we both value the cities, obviously the financial side of the city, and then the employees that are associated with all the unions. So we'll continue to work diligently to get to the end, so. Take any questions if you have any?
And Mayor, members of council, I think it's noteworthy, just to briefly discuss a little bit what the objectives were for the negotiation team on behalf of the city. Multi-year agreements first. I think it's always better if we can get multi-year agreements and button these things down so that we can look forward at the economic impact, the fiscal impact, and the like. We're in situations in particular categories where there's market conditions. If you look at AFSHME, mostly public works, a lot of blue-collar employees, and with market conditions right now, the salaries under certain classifications and the like of being $12, $13, $15 an hour can't literally compete with McDonald's, as we all know. And so we have basically taken that and tried to look at establishing some parameters that are much more related to current market conditions and the like. We're moving in that direction. We have to look at it in terms of the three-year deal about the fiscal impact to this city. Right now, we have a fairly decent understanding where we're at in FY '21, '22, this fiscal year. But as we all watch, I'm sorry, as we all watch the financial news, we see what's happening in the macroeconomics of the United States and the world, frankly. And so we have inflationary pressures. I'm going to get to an article that was written by Dr. Parrish, who's a pretty well-known Florida economist, and he talks about whether recessionary pressures are likely, when they're likely, and the like. And so, and the possible impact on those. We have to look at those out-years about, well, what could happen two to three years from now? And so as a model of that, we know that this year, we got a pretty good handle on it from Mr. Kelly, looking at the revenues and how much money we're bringing in. Okay, we're good for next year, but things could change significantly. The second year, maybe not as much, but that third year, it's somewhat unpredictable. I think that as you go out in time, the ability to predict the economic situation that you have becomes much more difficult. And so in doing that, what we tried to do was make the adjustments this year in year one, and then year two and year three have a more minimal amount of adjustment, looking at a total three-year package, basically. And in most cases, we're looking at, most cases, somewhere on the order of 12 to 14% for three years. That's a lot, but it's implemented in incrementally. And so if you did a 3% increase for three years, that would be 9%. We think because of some of the adjustments we have to make, we have to go a little bit higher than that, particularly in certain categories of collective bargaining units... higher than that, particularly in certain categories of collective bargaining units and groups and the like. I've done this in conjunction with Mr. Kelly to look at some of the modeling we have for revenues and our ability to afford it in those out-years. We feel fairly confident, very confident, that it's sustainable. And frankly, as we, my team goes down there to negotiate these CBAs, and they've been spending an awful lot of time with Mr. Herrig, who's the city's lawyer in Employment Labor Matters, and they go down and negotiate with negotiating teams from the five collective bargaining units, five being Police, AFSHME, and FIRE, but then Police and FIRE have a management unit, too, basically, which would be lieutenants at PD and FIRE. As they go down, they try to keep those tenants as their guiding objectives. Can we afford it? What's the sustainability level? What are we trying to do programmatically? What, how we want to help the employees and get their salaries up to market conditions? In essence, that's what it is. There isn't a whole lot of science other than that. They're doing, they do a great job. They go down there, it's give and take, collective bargaining. If you haven't been through it, it's rather painful sometimes, it's tedious, sometimes it's confrontation, not confrontational, but there's differences of opinion that can kind of get fairly, fairly...
Evident.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it. And they've done a good job. We have FIRE and FIRE supervisors locked up. That's at 14.5% over a three-year period. I think that other folks are going to look at that and say, that's probably where the bar is. That's the upper end. And when we look at recruitment-retention problems, particularly in policing, I was watching a business show, and an individual was on there talking about policing in America in 2020, 2022, and how different it is, and how difficult it is compared to five years ago or 10 years ago. And he made a statement, he goes, there isn't a police department in this country that doesn't have a recruitment-retention problem. Think about that, and the difference between now and five or 10 years ago. It's a difficult business. We recognize that it's difficult for a lot of different reasons, and the people that do it do a great job. We heard this morning, I mean, if that wasn't a tear-jerking moment of selflessness by one of our officers to basically save, attempt to save the life of two people successfully in one, it's as tough as it gets, that job. We all get it. I wish I could pay him a lot more than I, what I think is sustainable. I think you all probably would, too, but I have to do it within the parameters of what I think is affordable on the PD piece. And we're working in that, and hopefully we'll get to that point and the like. So, that's where we're at on negotiations. I don't want to take up a whole lot more time. Team's been working really hard. Kudos to them to lock down FIRE after two, three sessions. That was, I believe, a very good deal for the city and for the FIRE Department and Labor.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have, and, you know, I'm coming from private sector, so negotiations like this are kind of new to me, so if I'm asking an inappropriate question, please stop me. But when you're saying, when you're giving me percentage increases, is that just at their salary, or is that including retirement benefits, all the other benefits? I just, just so I understand.
It's a great question. It is basically on their base salary, calculated on an hourly basis. When you look at FIRE and Police entities, there are all kinds of different pays for specialty pay, if you're on, there was one, I think it was the dive team, but we didn't even have a dive team, I found out. It's like, really? Is that important for you in the contract? We don't even have a dive team. There is the detectives, the patrol support. So, there's certain qualifications and other incentives to obtain training and skill in certain areas and have certain types of specialty areas and the like. It's in addition to it. There's also overtime available, and frankly, if you hear, just I'll use a round number, if someone has a $50,000 a year salary, if you look at their W-2, there's usually opportunity to make significantly more, by overtime, in most cases. And so, it includes just the base, those percentages. Typically, the additional percentage doesn't calculate if it's on a denominated amount. What I mean by that is that the denominated amount might say, you get a set $150 a week or pay period for this type of specialty.
Thank you, Mr. Roth.
I think you guys are the first.
Go ahead, Mr. Roth.
Okay, well, so, this all looks good. I mean, I don't see where there's an action required, right?
And that's a great question, Mayor, Counselor Roth. All of these are, come with a recommendation from the city administration to counsel for approval, even though we go down, we do go through a process, what's called TA, tentative approvals, and we sign off that we agree with this in principle and would recommend approval to counsel. At the end of the day, the, is entirely subject to your approval, and it will come back before you for approval of the contracts.
Okay, because normally, this meeting would be, and my years gone back, we'd still be in shade right now. We're not right now.
Right, and I don't think that I'm talking about anything...
Okay, I'm just...
Right, no, it's a very correct observation.
So, because that's usually, we go back and forth a few times in our shade meetings, and then we, so anyway, that being said, we're moving in the right direction. The 3.75 an hour increase for AFSHME, does that come out to a percentage? I mean, that, they did that per, I understand they're lower wages, and that's, is that a higher percentage, a lower percentage, or?
It's a considerably higher percentage, and I don't think it's sustainable. We're starting to get into some areas that probably should be addressed in a shade meeting. But to answer the question, that was an hourly proposal opposed to a percentage proposal. For an employee that makes $30 an hour, it's twice an increase of what an employee at $15 an hour would be, half of it, basically. Yeah.
So, because traditionally, they've been our lowest-paid employees...
Yes, sir.
...in negotiations, so glad to see that. Looks like FIRE is where they normally are. So, getting down to PD, Rank and File, if I added it up, it looks like over the three years, it's 28%, but if I'm reading this correctly, in red, it says step increase represents 3% per year. Is that in addition?
It's a fairly complic, it's not complicated, but it has this feature, and this feature is that if you're a commissioned member of the Bradenton Police Department, sworn officer, you get what's called a step increase. And October 1st of every year, the new budget cycle, officers get somewhere between $1,950 to $2150 as a raise, a flat monetary raise.
Every single year?
Every year.
Regardless of whether we're in union negotiations?
That's correct. So, my point with it is that you're already starting with the raise. There isn't another employee in this city that basically gets a raise automatically in their contract like that as a step increase. So, when you take that raise for average officers, you know, somewhere between $45,000 to, let's just use a round number, $90,000, $100,000 for management at PD, that raise basically relates to somewhere between 3.5% to 4.2% increase automatically. So, when they come and they say, well, we only want it 3%, well, is that 3% on top of the 4% you already got? And that's what Mr. Kelly and myself have to be accountable to you guys for, to say, this is the money we're going to ask you for to fund those contracts. And I get the fact that the negotiations are somewhat tedious sometimes, but there has to be an acknowledgement by that bargaining unit that they already get a raise. And if you, I don't, if you can call it 7%, which, which you get 3.5% to 4 already, say I put 3 on top of that, that, to me, that would be 6.5%, 7% basically, right? Because you've got your step increase, and then you've got your 3%. You can call it whatever you want, but you have to recognize that if you get more money and the city and Mr. Kelly have to pay you more money vis-à-vis the counsel, you got a raise. That step increase is a raise. There's a lack of acknowledgement of it.
Well, and...
And that's a difficult thing to start a negotiation process with, oh, no, we, you know, we don't count that. I think we're getting there.
Okay.
And I don't think it's anybody's fault that we've had that little bit of a difficulty. And what I look at is the total number. I go, I'm a big numbers guy. I got to know how much more in millions this is going to cost the city in year one, two, and three. I can break it down and do the computational math and figure out the percentages or whatever it might be, but at the end of the day, you know, I got to look at general fund, $51 million, and if this is going to cost another million, where's that come from?
Okay.
Because that's the question you're going to be asking me.
Well, and just so you know, and I think you do know, when I asked that question, I already knew the answer to that question. I was just making it common knowledge for everyone that that's, so when they're saying they want a 14% raise in year one, that's with the step, which is equal to about 3, which comes out to about 17.
That is correct.
Okay, and that's, I understand that, so. And the other thing, I guess the comment, the other comment, you know, you started off about, you watched a business report and with the state of policing, and to be honest, the entire time I've been here, you know, a long time, with three police chiefs, I've heard this retention problem, so the entire time I've been here, and that doesn't mean it doesn't exist now, but I think it also exists in every single department we have, and also in every business that's out there. I mean, you know, I follow business reports all the time about the state of the economy and where we're going, and nobody knows, because the economy, if every, if every business that's out there could hire more employees right now, they would, because there's just money rolling in, but they can't find employees, so they're not. So that, so therefore, the economy's hard to predict because of, you know, at least a United States labor shortage that's in all areas. So, we're running, you know, I'm glad we're moving ahead. This is better than we were the last time we had a meeting. I mean, I'm not sure whether we're ready to, if this is as good as you guys, are you saying this is as good as you think you can get?
Oh, no.
Should this be in shade right now? I mean...
I think, I think those types of questions, as far as how far you will, you know, where we're at, as far as final numbers, would probably best be served in shade.
And it looks like, so FIRE, basically, we're in total agreement with them?
Yes, sir.
Is that what I'm getting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're close with AFSHME?
AFSHME's a little tricky, because they want that 4, 34 an hour, that amount, and we don't think putting it in an hourly is the right way to go for that particular thing. What we're trying to do with AFSHME is get up the starting wages to, close to $15 an hour, because those people at the lower ends, we can't even hire...
Right.
...grounds and maintenance people at $12, $13, $14 an hour. They get, it's crazy, we contract with a labor service, basically, to give Jim some help to be able to do these things, and we can pay them a little bit more, and they pay the employees $15 an hour. They go, we'd love to work for the city, but if we work for the city, we got to go back to $12 bucks an hour.
Yeah.
It's counterintuitive, doesn't make sense. It's not workable, it's not sustainable. And so, we're getting closer with that situation. There is some serious labor shortages that need to be addressed, and so, we're working through different options that are available. We will, however we proceed, it would involve a fairly significant but sustainable salary increase to the blue-collar workers over there.
Mr. Sanders had a question first, and then Ms. Barnaby.
I'm good.
Go ahead, if you want.
No, no, no.
Mr. Sanders, go ahead.
So, I agree with Mr. Roth. I'll believe another thing he said, unless I wasn't listening closely enough, but I do believe we probably should be in shade versus this, and I would ask that we, there's a lot more work to do, that we need to come back with some more figures. And the question that Mr. Roth asked, and I would ask, is that this is what the unions are recommending, this doesn't have your stamp of approval with what I just heard, except with the FIRE Department, and you're okay with that. So, I would like to see, as you mentioned, a cost by union per year and per total of what they're requesting, and then what you would be recommending, and to further counsel to say, well, we'll give you this much authority to do, go back somewhere between what they're asking and what you're recommending, somewhere in between, and maybe we can vote on that at some time in the future, or in a shade meeting. So, I understand the retention of the police officers, I understand that, but I don't think counsel, and I know I didn't, I'll use me as example, did not understand the step process, and that's what retention is. The step process is, this, I come in at $50,000, next year I get $55,000, don't take these numbers literally, $60,000. So, it's encouragement for me to stay in the PD department, and I don't know if other departments have a step process or not, but that step process is a retention program, basically, I'm presuming. And so, yes, I saw documents that our police department has a lower starting salary, but I'm not so sure the other police unions around and departments had the same step program. So, I think that needs to be figured out. Yeah, anyway, I would like to see a cost per union on what they're asking, what you might be at, and something in between before we...
Sure.
...go much further.
And we don't want to get much further information, because obviously, we probably should be in some of those terms that...
Let me just say that I agree with you, Counselor Sanders, in pretty much every point, and I want to kind of hit a couple of things, because I've heard, when we did address this with the step, well, everybody gets a step. Well, when we actually looked at what other departments get for steps, some get them after five years, there was a whole host, everybody does that differently. And I'd also agree with your point that it does have retention value, because it rewards years in service, basically, and the longer you're with the department, it provides, just what you said, a retention incentive bonus. I agree with that. We actually, Counselor, do have the aggregate numbers on the handout as far as the cost, and if you look at the Bradenton Police Department, PBA for Rank and File, so the proposal, if you look at the left side of it, at 14%, basically, total cost for the proposal in the various years of 14, 8, and 6, is the first year, it would cost you $1,068, the second year would cost you about $800,000, and the third year would cost about $700,000. And so, by year three, we would have...
That doesn't include the 3%.
It includes everything.
Everything.
Yeah, I believe it does.
Well, I saw 14, and Mr. Roth said 17.
Yep. It, this is an aggregate number, that includes everything. The point with it is, though, is that by year three, your labor cost just went up $2.56 million.
Right.
Every year.
Every, yeah, every year.
Forever, ever.
You'll never shed that.
Forever.
So, the only thing we can do, just like a corporation has to do, is increase our revenue. We got to bring in more money. And that, I mean, that's the way governments work, but certain times when there's economic downturns, and we talked about that later, you know, that becomes a challenge.
Well, the step was put in, I believe we talked about that a lot several years back, where, you know, when, and we made it, we changed the step. The step was a different way, and we made that. So, to try to retain, you know, so you'd automatically be able to step up if you had longevity, and I don't know that it has 100% worked the way we, the way I had understood it as a councilman, so, because it isn't retained, we've got that gap...
Right.
...in between the new officers and our guys that are getting ready to retire or out there, so.
There's a lot of nuances like that, for sure, but I'll tell you, just on, if I could just finish up, and then on the step, if I was going to counsel, I say I wouldn't give up the step. That's gold, if you're an employee. That's an automatic raise. There's no other employee in the city that gets a roughly 4% raise, you know, just to start. And I don't, if you want 7%, well, that's kind of what we got on table right now. That's fairly generous. And Manatee County does not get that. Yep, Mayor, back to, I'm sorry.
Just one question, and you may not want to answer this if we want to put it in shade. We did give, go ahead and give a $2.74 raise to part of AFSHME, the...
That is correct, yes, sir.
And so, is that negatively or positively or any affected negotiations? Because I saw that as that, well, maybe we, maybe we should have been in, you know...
That's probably a shade question, and I...
Okay, I got it.
Yeah.
That's probably, you don't have to answer.
That's a good question.
Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, going, going back to previous time on the council, one of the things that was important to me, and I believe the council expressed it at that time, was to make sure that our emergency services have employees that represent our community, that we have individuals, we have people that are people of color, that are bilingual, that can speak not only Spanish... that are bilingual, that can speak not only Spanish, but possibly Creole, because we have a large Creole Haitian community within the city. Um, I would like to encourage everyone to, to keep that in mind, and to make sure that what we do, we are in competition with everybody on the West Coast to try to find bilingual emergency services workers, or individuals that, that speak more than one language fluently. And it becomes very difficult. People get poached a lot, and I just, I, I want our emergency services to reflect the complexions of our community. Just a thought.
Ms. Coker?
Yeah, um, again, stop me if I, but, um, I, I think public safety is our number one priority here. But I think the longevity, it seems like it would be prudent to focus a little bit on retirement benefits, because that might encourage someone to stay longer, to get their retirement benefits. So that's why I'm curious that we don't even bring it up here, and maybe we need to bolster some of that, rather than this step that's become, and maybe the step, we have it forever, it's in perpetuity, or...
Uh, it's, it's, it's not really. I mean, a contract is good for the contract term, but if you can't reach a new contract, it basically goes back to status quo of the old co- contract on a year-by-year basis. And so, I, I don't wanna say it's perpetuity. It's kinda a complex question. Um, but I will also point out that we looked at retirement benefits and reducing the contribution, which would actually, the officer wouldn't have to make the contribution, the city would for him, um, and they wanted straight money. I was surprised. And, and I think we're talking a little bit, having a little bit more positive discussions about that aspect of it. Really doesn't matter to us. It's, the dollar's a dollar. But, but to them, I, I'd agree with you. Yeah. I, I know we've gone far along on this subject, and I have a fairly lengthy...
So, Mr. Roth, and then Mr. Sanders?
Yeah, so, um, and I just want to, as we're, as we're into negotiations, and, and this, these are always tough times. It's never been pleasant. Um, that I, I did wanna get in there, because this comes up every time, and it's come up this time. And, I mean, you put it in red on, on the diagram, so, and I would've brought it up anyway, because I want, I want it to be recognized, that there is, with the police department, the step increase, which is, you know, something that we honor, and it's, it's a guaranteed three percent. And, and it's not that, you know, just like a little acknowledgement. I mean, that's the taxpayers' money that we're giving up, and, and it's real money, and, and it should be appreciated. I'm, I'm sure it is. I mean, I'm not, I don't wanna be, uh, so, but that, that should be considered, that that's something that we, we do, because we care. But it also, sometimes when you give a child a gift, and I, if you give a, a loved one a gift, you, we wanna hear, you know, "Thank you. That was nice." So, I, it's just something that, that, we should continue doing it. We've been doing it. We should honor it. But it is real money.
Yes, sir.
And it does turn fourteen percent into seventeen percent.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sanders?
Uh, just one other question, again, if, if you wanna discuss it in shade, which we had before. Have we considered, have we considered a, a conversion, uh, from retirement to 401K for, uh, this was something that has to be, you know, actuarially, uh, looked into to, uh, do that versus the retirement plan that many places have long gone?
We haven't. That would, that would be such a monumental-
It is a monumental task.
Yeah, and, and, uh, uh, you know, just like Florida retirement system, they have two options. One's defined benefit, the other one is the contributory. Um, basically, it's a 401 plan.
Has any cities that you're aware of, uh, done that?
In public safety, not really.
Not, not in public safety.
The reason why is that the defined benefit is something of the past. Uh, you know, when you worked for big companies in the old days, you got a pension plan, a defined benefit payment. It's unsustainable. The pension liability, just like to the city, the OPEC and the like, is, uh, doesn't look good on the books. It's bankrupted some cities, states, the like.
That's my point, that the pension plan has bankrupt private businesses. I worked for one. I lost it, and the last twenty years of my employment didn't have pension. It had contributions that, that my employer contributed, if I contributed, or even more, uh, than sending was, if, if I contribute more, they contribute more. And then, it's very easy to determine in, in not these negotiations that you go through, because you just eliminated them.
One, one plan.
All right, and final point, Mr. Roth?
Yeah, and, um, so, on that note, I, I've had that discussion with the previous administrator. The problem with that is, it would, it would bankrupt us because, to try to switch it, because you still have to honor the old pension, and, um, you're paying for that. It doesn't, you can't, you can't discard the old pension. You're still paying it, and now people aren't paying in any longer. So now you've got two systems going, and it doesn't, it may sound like an easy fix, but it's a horrible fix.
It's not, I understand. It's, that's good, but it's only for new hires, not old hires. So, there, there's-
But new hires aren't paying into the system.
I understand, but that's where you'd have to look at it and study it. It, it is complicated, but it's not impossible, because corporate America did it forty years ago.
All right, moving on, bring up-
Mr. St. Luc.
St. Luc at this point?
He's gonna give a quick presentation on Granicus. Uh, I'll further ado.
Morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Administrator, and City Attorney. Item before you is, um, let's say, part one of two for the short-term rental system, uh, ordinance thirty ninety-three, which is approved early this year, requires the city to create a certificate of registration system, to create the system and manage it. Uh, department staff reviewed multiple systems, three systems, multiple times, received quotes on them, and we are asking for, uh, the purchase for Granicus, which was the one that we chose. Uh, again, staff reviewed multiple systems. We reached out to other cities to see what they used. I would also like to acknowledge, uh, the singer put together a great meeting about three weeks ago, multiple departments, so we can get together and discuss what items were gonna be needed, you know, what responsibilities are gonna exist. So, the program, uh, certificate registration program will eventually defund itself. So, in this item, we're asking for a budget amendment, so we can make the initial purchase. The item that you see is about thirty-two thousand dollars, which is based on six hundred and thirty vacation rentals being listed in the city. Now, this number could change by year. It's based on a ten-month sliding scale that we use with this. And I just wanna note that, again, we got four quotes. This, out of one, two, three, four, this was the second least expensive. The one above it was double this, and the fourth one was double that one, a hundred and seventy-something thousand. It just didn't make sense for doing, you know, this type of system. We do not have rates yet, uh, but we do have a survey of other cities to see what they're charging for them. We're probably gonna be in area one fifty to two hundred for initial, uh, for your initial registration, and then your renewal is typically less than that.
And as you may remember, when we looked at surrounding areas' rates for that, it was all the way up to five hundred, nine hundred dollars, and that was a big issue with the realtor that came down and said, you know, "We don't, we, we appreciate not excessive rate. We think that could be, that could be, um, difficult to, to include in the overall cost of operating the, you know, short-term rentals." But we need the platform for them, obviously, and we need to get going on this program. We need to go, get going on the mobility program. You guys have done some great stuff. We're excited about it. We love working on it, um, but we gotta get it moving down the road from A to Z, and, and he's a computer guy, so it's a, again, let's do it with automation.
I, I'm, I'm sorry. If I just may, I just wanna add that we, of course, at this time, do not know if we might need another staff person, because this is gonna require initial inspections, um, in-person inspections or remote inspections. Some cities are using, um, they hired additional staff. Some are providing overtime for the existing inspectors to do that. So we don't know at this time, but we wanna, um, include the possibility in our, in the registration fee, so it can cover, in case we do need to have additional staff person.
We've got Mrs. Barnaby, and then Mrs. Coker?
Mrs. C- if you wanna go first, Ms. Coker, that's fine. Uh, am I not remembering that there wasn't a not to exceed in our, in our ordinance, three hundred dollars? Did I not, do I not remember that?
I think so.
Yeah.
I didn't think the, I didn't think the ordinance had a cap. It could've, but I, I remember it's talking-
I know there was a lot of discussion about that.
Oh, no, I remember that, too.
And we said not, and I'm pretty sure the motion had not to exceed three hundred-
Yeah.
-at one point.
It, it may have. I'll look at it, but I don't think it's an issue, because he's saying it, estimated cost now is somewhere between one fifty, two hundred range.
Exact, well, no, but you were saying other things. I thought I heard nine hundred in there.
No, that's what others charge.
No, no.
Oh, okay.
That's what others charge.
I just wanna make sure, yeah, yeah.
Remember, they had, like, the difference between the size of the home, and it was up to nine hundred dollars, I think.
And also, I'm getting calls about wanting to be able to, you know, know what they're gonna have to do, because people are buying properties, and they, they wanna know. I don't even know what to tell them at this point. Uh, who do I send them to?
I, I think you tell them that we're in the process of program development, and that probably sometime within the next month, that the administrator's office will be promulgating rules, um, regulations, fees, and the like, and that things are looking fairly promising thus far, to be efficient and accommodatable and, and otherwise reasonably priced.
And this strictly is a cover-cost aspect, not a profit?
Correct. It's net neutral.
Well, and now we're talking about hiring another staff person, which that was a nu- that's a new thing, too, which we were told they weren't gonna need more staff, but...
Well, I, I, I think that's almost-
Don't remember that.
That, that's unthinkable, to the extent of, this program's going to take more people, like any program will take. And so, where it has things like, and, and, and remember, these aren't hard inspections, that you're going to check the water heaters and the plumbing and the HVAC systems and the stair pitch and the roof pitch and everything in between. These are fairly cursory kind of inspections, but they are safety inspections. I think we owe, uh, a, a certain modicum of responsibility for commercial businesses, and, and these are lodging houses. Make no doubt about it. And, and to that extent, there's some reasonable cost associated with it. We, we might be able to do half a position. We're, we're talking about doing video inspections and the like. So I don't want anybody thinking the idea that this thing is going to be, in some way, from the administrator's office, um, laborious or, or overly excessively cost and bureaucratic and heavy-handed and like, I, I don't see it. I mean, I wanna get something that works, easy.
I just wanna go on record.
Right, yeah, we don't know yet.
Hiring more staff. I, the video inspections, I, you know, was what I was told we were gonna have, so...
We have looked at that system as well, so-
Okay.
We're not, definitely not set on needing a person, and this person would be, if they needed to go out and do inspections and to administer, but we're not at that point yet.
What I would like, and, and may consider, since last week, from my area out on the west side, in, in a planned unit development of condominiums and townhomes, was the Bradenton Fire Department showed up three times with equipment out there for false alarms, elevators that didn't work, and the like. And when they do that, there's two problems. One is, it costs us all money, and the second problem is, they're not available if there was a real call. So if you're doing rentals and things like that, and you have excessive calls for emergency services to your location, maybe there should be a cost of doing that business.
Well, that shouldn't even, to me, that should be everybody, not just vacation rentals. I mean...
One's a commercial business, one is a residence. If my wife, grandmother, daughter get hurt and I call an ambulance, I think I'm paying for that through property taxes. If I'm running a business and it's becoming excessive, I think I can make a pretty compelling argument that that is, is oh above the responsibility of government.
Ms. Barnaby, and then Mr. Roth?
Thank you. Well, and, and we do, for, uh, the, the police and fire department do have charges in place, that if you have so many, um, false alarms and, and that sort of thing, we, we already have that in place at this point in time. But I, I do believe that if it becomes excessive, that's something that we need to consider. Um, I did share with the department heads and the council, the news story of, of what happened in Pittsburgh at an Airbnb, which it could've happened anywhere. It really could've happened anywhere. Apparently, the people that were renting the Airbnb set it up and started, it was, it was almost like a, a, a disco dance club kind of thing, and there were hundreds and hundreds of people there, and there were people standing in line waiting to get, go in, and then there was shootings that took place. So it, it was a mess, but it could have happened anywhere. Um, I just wanted to, to go back, uh, Dr. St. Luc, we're going to charge an initial fee to set this up with people, the initial inspections, this sort of thing, and then there will be a renewal fee that will be at a lower rate.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Roth?
Um, the, I've been, I've gotten feedback from people in the community that thank us for, for doing something with this, because it's perceived to be, if not a current problem, but a, a, a problem that's going to happen. And, and, uh, you know, I, I know in my, in my immediate area, there's, uh, you know, at least a half a dozen, um, Airbnbs and, and more on the way. Almost every house that takes place is a potential Airbnb. Um, this program is extremely reasonably priced to, to help us get into the business, just by buying software, and then just, you know, passing the cost on to the business, not the residents, the business. And when I say that, um, you know, if we don't pass the cost on to the business, we cast the cost on to the taxpayers that aren't Airbnb-ing, that really don't want an Airbnb next to them. Not only, hey, I didn't ask for a party house to be next door to it, and I sure don't like paying for it, you know? So, there's that, that side, too. Um, I, this is just, this, the whole conversation, again, I, I don't, I, I don't, you know, concern myself with the, the woes of the poor Airbnb operator that chooses to come into a residential neighborhood and decide to monetize a home that we'd all rather have a homeowner in, a firefighter, a police officer, a teacher. We'd all rather have them in there than an Airbnb. We can't control it, because the state with its gigantic clop-hopper shoes has come in and taken away our rights. This is an extremely reasonable purchase to help us to regulate a minimum amount, a minimum amount of regulation for someone to come in and, and turn a residential neighborhood into-
So is that a motion?
A for-profit. And yes, it is.
Well, I think, well, I, I-
We're going to discussion, so...
That's still a motion.
And is there a second?
I'll, I'll second with, with discussion, and then may undo my second, let's see. My next?
Yeah, you got a second?
All right.
We have a motion, a second, discussion.
For discussion. Um, so this is only for the software that somebody's gonna manage to input the data to track the Airbnb system?
Yes, sir.
That's all this is?
Right. How this system works is, what Granicus does, is they pull all, there's about eighty-five different vacation rental websites. The Granicus software pulls all these, uh, addresses in. Granicus does the address verification, so they work with a property preserver's office to make sure, yes, that is, uh, you know, who the homeowner is, it's within their city boundaries. Granicus does the backend work and sets up the portal for us.
Sets up the-
Right. It'll be up for us to go in, create the workflows, create the letters.
There was like six hundred and some odd Airbnbs or, or like things?
Correct.
That we know it's in the city?
Correct. They said six hundred.
So this is managing those six hundred that's on record, plus any new ones?
Yes, sir.
All right. So do you have any projections of how this is gonna be managed? Is this gonna, you said something about hiring another person. This is probably gonna be time-consuming, so if we have to hire another person, we need to know the big picture of how much it's gonna cost, and with the, the salary and benefits. And I saw something in here that said something about a car. Why is a car in this? They're probably gonna have to have a car. A procurement vehicle, NCPA, what's, what is this?
No, that's the, the procurement vehicle is the national contract, NCPA.
Oh, it's just a vehicle, not like in vehicle?
Correct, national.
Not in actual wheels and drive?
No, no, no.
So if it's another department, is, is somebody gonna have to have, now that we mentioned it, a, a vehicle and expense account to do this, this kinda stuff? You know, they're not gonna, or, or we have to have s-
If we have to bring someone in, there may be a pool car that's our-
There has to be a pool car available, so there could be some expenses. We need to know all the expenses. I like to see a pro forma on what we think this is gonna cost, and then divide it up by the six thirty-five, and then we got the number, or at least that's the best number we can come up with.
Right, and that's what we'll come back to after we-
Six thirty-five times a hundred and fifty dollars is, I don't know how much-
Hundred and three thousand.
Hundred and three thou- you already knew it. You've already asked that question. Good, good job. So we got a hundred and three thousand dollar budget, if it's a hundred and fifty dollars, uh, per, per application. Plus, I understand that there'll be other added fees, but that, uh, individual Airbnb will have to pay that on a per, per item basis, which doesn't hap- but, but my concern is that we don't overcharge, like, like Mrs. Coker said. on a per, per item basis, which doesn't, but, but my concern is that we don't overcharge, like, like Mrs. Coker said. Uh, upfront, we, we, we need to know, I'd like to know more. I'm, 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 this is good. Not a problem with that, but I like to look at the bigger picture just so I know where we're going. And this is a, this is a year-to-year contract?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, so your estimation right now I'm hearing and, and Mr. Perry is a hundred and fifty dollars, but that's not a solid number, is it?
It is not.
It is not. So I'd like to keep us up to, you know, based on somebody unemployment, you know, they got to, they're going to have benefits, retirement we talked about, uh, expenses, pool car, maybe other things that, you know, that.
Absolutely. And, and I think we will bring that to you as a big picture.
And where they're going to, where we're going to put them, uh, yeah.
What's before council right now is.
Is just this software. I understand that.
Software. And I think we spent about twenty-four minutes maybe thus far.
Yep, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three. Three.
Yeah.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Uh, Mr. Perry.
Mayor Council, um, next on the new business is we're going to get into the capital development plan. And, uh, from the consent agenda, I believe it was item A. I will start with that. I think it's probably the best thing, um, to start with. It's kind of a good segue into.
Mr. Perry, I'd like to ask a question and this would be, I have two comment cards talking about, it says item number seven and the other says city hall sell-off. Um, is it something you want to listen to? And I'm talking to the resident, you know, do you want to listen first and then maybe have a comment after we talk about an item? Or do you want to come up first and comment? And I'm asking.
Does it matter if the questions are answered during the presentation that I don't read?
Okay, so we'll go through each presentation and I'll give an opportunity at each one for public comment at that point.
Just for council, no, I, I spoke in this call, but.
Really? Okay, okay. All right, good. Now, I think it's important because we talked about, if, if these do not get approved today, there is really not much need for public comment. If they get approved, then we start our town halls in different options to get things. But if there's no town hall to need because nothing's there, then where we're at. So, all right, I just want to make sure that because it is important to me as well as as council and I know as the staff we've talked that we do have the input of all. Continue, Mr. Perry.
There are a series of, of about, I think, five to six items before us that are preliminary. I want to start with the, with the preface that these are preliminary, uh, steps in a process. Uh, none of them are authorizing the building, selling or otherwise developing of, of any sort of, uh, construction, municipal development. But the first item I'd like to start with, which I think is a precursor uh, to, to the entirety of the project is, is the regional economic consulting group matter that was on item A from the consent agenda. And we're asking for approval basically of this, this amount of twenty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars as submitted in the proposal. It's included in your package, I believe. Uh, regional economic consulting group is going to, first of all, who they are. Uh, Dr. Parker, again, fairly renowned in-demand type of economist, uh, gave a speech and I'll, and I'll talk about that later. But these folks worked with Dr. Parker, basically, Clyde Deo, Dr. Clyde Deo. He was the, uh, senior economist with the executive office for the governor and basically did a multitude of different types of financial fiscal impact forecasting. What I need these folks to do, I think what you want them to do, is to look at and say, what is the highest and best use for the property? Would it be condos? Would it be a large Target store? Um, would it be apartments? Would it be multi-use? Would it be a health center, the like? Affordable housing, all of that. And I think what they can do is tell us it's going, it, it, mixed use is probably going to involve, um, the best use, the highest and best use, but it's important for them to do it. When you say, well, why do you say it's the highest and best use? They're going to give you two reasons, two reasons. One is it'll generate the maximum amount of government revenue. What kind of government revenue? Ad valorem property tax, franchise fees, sales tax, permitting fees, impact fees, and a whole litany of other things that these guys basically do economic modeling on. And they can take a pretty good look at, if you put that type of project down there, this is what you can expect to increase the revenue to the city and the county probably. County gets a free ride off this too. Um, and, and, and what those revenues look like. So, so that gives you some idea when the proposals come in about some policy decisions you all probably want to have that information to make. The next thing it does is what's the economic impact overall on the business community? And, and how much can we expect? It's, it's probably going to be in the hundreds of millions of dollars. Something of this magnitude typically is. And they apply, again, microeconomic modeling. It's, it's in his resume that I think was provided as far as how they do their forecasting and the like. Typically, when developers come into town, they talk to city councillors, mayors, city administrators, they already have done that. They say, hey, I got this development project and look what it's going to do. We got these economists and it's going to do all this stuff. That needs to be done. Highest and best use, how much money, economic, both direct and indirect. That's what's before council. I'll stand for questions.
Any questions on that? Mr. Sanders?
I think we're jumping the gun here with an economic study on something we don't know that we're even going to do. I think that the public should be, have a voice. If that's what we want to do, we should be doing that first. That would be my first priority. My second priority would not be to, uh, spend twenty-two thousand dollar taxpayers' money to come up with an economic study that, that has no vision on what we, the public wants. So I would have a problem with that because they may have different, uh, ideas than what our constituents want. So that's number one. So I think that doing the study after we get some bids might be appropriate because then, uh, we have, we'll have bids with, uh, developers that will say, I want to do this. I want to do this. I want to do this. And then maybe a vetting through an economic study that, well, we don't want that. We do want this. We don't want that. But to tell them, uh, what they've got to have seemed to be a design that, you know, that maybe the public should be, have input to. Not just, you know, somebody up in Tampa that we may never use this study. So I, I'd be opposed to this at this time.
May I respond to that?
Yeah, we've got two other councilpeople. You want them to go first or you want to respond?
I think I'd like to just take that one. I don't think this is even close to what comes first, the chicken or the egg. The study comes first because the public can't make a decision until they know what the possibilities are, I would think. I, I don't know if I'd want to be a public member and, and not know what it could do for me as it relates to economic benefit. And this economic benefit, remember, it generates from downtown.
I'll pull the.
It generates from downtown, but it spreads from Ward five to Ward one when that money comes in. That the city with that tax revenue can do a lot more. I've never seen it be done the other way around. I think that's flying blind. I think that's putting a blindfold on, getting in the aircraft and going, oh, where's the destination?
Well, these, are these people experts in waterfront properties?
They are experts in economic development and, and, and they're unquestionably as qualified as I've ever seen, far beyond my expertise of an undergraduate degree in economics or, or anyone else's that I know of that doesn't do it for a living.
I understand, but I, you know, you know, we're not going to put a Target. We're not going to put a Walmart. We're not going to put a Seven-Eleven down on waterfront.
Well, exactly. I, I.
No, he had mentioned that, that Target.
I am somewhat reiterating. I'm reiterating what he just said. I would like to have that study. I would like to have those numbers before I make a decision. I think the public should have that before they start weighing in. I, I think, I think it is, I, I think it, I think we need to have before we start making decisions like that and I think it's irresponsible not to. And I'm ready to make a motion, but go ahead, Ms. Barnaby.
Having gone through with, with our community back in nineteen ninety-seven and nineteen ninety-eight, what I would call pure hell, uh, this community was split. And we had twelve hundred people show up at a public meeting because of what was happening to this property. We didn't have twelve hundred people show up to protest the Vietnam War or segregation, desegregation. I think it's incredibly important to have specific data and factual data available to us. And of course, it's going to be made available to the community in order for everyone to understand what possibly could happen should we choose to not have city hall on waterfront property. And I, I am, I am no economist and I'm not a fortune teller. So I would like to have factual data presented to us so that we have a good understanding of what the possibilities are. And I think that reasonable citizens would want to have that information as well.
Mrs. Coachman?
Thank you, Mayor. To be or not to be, to purchase, to sell. Uh, I agree with you, Mr. Sanders. It is very important to have public comment. But I also see the need to have this research done so that we have some ideas and then when we work, talk with the public, you know, we can say, well, these are some ideas. What are yours? You know, you've got to have something, even when we meet with the public and then say, hey, what do you want to do? What you think, you know, we should do. I think we need to have an idea, but definitely not leave out the public. And I don't think we will.
I don't think it's anybody's intent to.
Um, Mr. Roth?
Yeah. Um, so as a private citizen back in ninety-seven, ninety-eight, I remember taking my daughter over to my very first, uh, Public Involvement Act to protest moving city hall. I, I spoke. Um, and, uh, as I was of the opinion that we should have stayed where we were and popped top the building is what I suggested. Um, anyway, that being said, here we are. Uh, you know, this is a big process. When I came in, I, on day one, it's like, city hall should not be on the water. The police station should not be on the water, you know, but it is and we'll analyze it and go year by year, day by day. Uh, you know, originally, we were still using the auditorium. It's a fabulous auditorium. While, while it was in use, it was beautiful. Uh, people loved it. And then we had more auditoriums pop up and, uh, it wasn't being used anymore. And then the upkeep and the, uh, the analysis came forward of, uh, are we, uh, let's see, we're losing a half a million. Can we get it down to where we're only losing a quarter million a year? Yeah, great job. We're losing a quarter million a year. We're really winning the game. And then we shut it down. Uh, you know, we have both, we've outgrown both sides of the building. Um, you know, I'd say that, uh, you know, it's time to consider moving. Um, we've certainly thought about it enough, talked about it enough, analyzed it enough. The market is crazy right now, so, um, you know, it might be where this would be the time period where something can happen. We have properties, um, that the city already owns that we can, we can relocate to. We're not like a hairy homeowner out there that can't sell his home because you don't have a place to go. We have options. That being said, um, the study, you know, I've watched these studies my whole, uh, time in office. You know, they're pretty predictable, um, because the market's pretty predictable. I mean, it's, it's, you know, uh, they'll probably come up with something like Channelside in Tampa, um, you know, with a smaller scale. Um, and, and that's, that's okay because I already think I know what'll happen, but I, I, I can't tell you that I know what happened. I'm not an expert, so we get that out there. Um, and at the end of the day, you know, the market, the reason, we have us, we'll get a study and that's great. That gives us some information to move on so we can have a general discussion. And then the market will tell us what the market wants to do, just like, just like when we were, when I came in, Main Street was dead. There were two bars on Main Street and they were both problems. Um, and that was it. Uh, the discussion was that, uh, downtown will never be anything more than, uh, the seat of government. That was the old argument. The new argument was we can do better. Well, we did and, and what came in were bars. And people were saying, I don't want bars. I want restaurants. And it's like, well, we don't have any restaurants wanting to come in yet. So all we can do is expand on what the market wants. So, and I'm getting to the point is, we can have a study. It's, it's, it's probably the proper thing to do, uh, you know, twenty-two, three, five-oh for the amount of figures that we're talking about. It's not, it's not a, a budget buster. But then again, I mean, the, the market will tell us what the market wants to do. The market's going to do what the market wants to do. And that'll be for us to decide. This study isn't going to make anybody do anything. Um, the dialogue has started. It, it started, I didn't start it, but the dialogue has started and it's been around a long time. Um, I've been, people telling me, uh, ever since the day I got in down here, I shouldn't be down here. I agree, you know, so, meaning, you know, city hall, you know, elected officials on, 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 on the water. They'd like to stick us out by the city dump. I've got no problem with that, you know?
We don't have.
The old, the old dump, the old dump.
The dump became the golf course.
The golf course dump.
Yeah.
Um, so anyway, I, I just don't, look, this is, this is a big deal. It's not new. It's certainly not new. And, uh, you know, I mean, we have to start gathering, uh, information and yes, there, there needs to be community involvement that maybe wasn't involved the last time. Uh, you know, I could tell you that when I was down protesting the move of city hall, there weren't any elected officials down there listening to the crowd.
Right. And I think that's, that's one of the things that I think you've seen, basically my whole tenure on the council as well now is the last year and several months, is that it's important to do a process that we're going through because since I've been here since 2013, we need to sell city hall, sell city hall, sell city hall. It's one of the steps, but it's actually like step five or six, whatever you want to get to of these initial things you have to do. Because until we decide some of this, there really is no process going through and we have to make sure that we get that done and go. Um, Mrs. Barnaby had a comment. I saw that card first.
I'm willing to, I'm ready to make a motion to approve, uh, the, improve the, or approve the engagement letter with the regional economic consulting group and authorize the mayor to execute that on behalf of the city.
Okay, so we have a motion.
And my comment was that.
And then, hold on, let me finish with the motion by Ms. Barnaby to approve going forward as, as stated and then.
Mr. Roth and, and what he said, it's probably a minor amount, twenty-two thousand dollars, but twenty-two here and twenty-two there and twenty-two here is starting to add up. We've had, my concern was that we've had a lot of studies and I don't, I, I hope that we'll pay attention to these studies if they're good, but because the market will determine, not a study, what we're going to do downtown or anyplace in this community. So I, I'm just looking at after taxpayers' money that, that I thought we might be premature. Fine, let's spend the twenty thousand dollars and see what they come up with. But I don't, we still don't have to follow that, what their recommendation is, so I, I thought, I thought it might be a fruitless point uh, for some professor, you know, to, to tell us what to do with our waterfront property. And, but fine, I've seconded it. Let's vote, let's move on.
Your discussion. Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yeah.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors. Next matter for consideration in your package is the considered disposition notice. We had talked about this, um, at the workshop and, um, I'm going to put this on the overhead. Ms. Melton, if, is any, okay, great. Um, as we discussed at the workshop and, and we had benefit of, um, of, of council, specialty council on this, we are required basically to, to advertise. we are required basically to advertise. And meeting the important components of that requirement, it being in a CRA, I tried to make this basically a proposal that would allow people to submit what their offering was. So I call it a considered disposition nationwide. If you see, I highlighted and it doesn't show up real good. I apologize for that. But nationwide invitation to offer proposals for the purchase of real property. The important components of this document are that it will go nationwide. It will be put on some platforms, commercial real estate and the like. The city is basically giving its notice of intent to invite people to propose. I modified this one for 90 days.
Right.
Initially, it was 60. And some of the discussion, I took the liberty of doing that.
My copy says 60,000.
Does it?
That highlighted out, so we didn't do a revision for the public prior to this though, did we? Or did we? Tammy?
Good.
No, sir. I didn't know about it.
No, we discussed it at last week's workshop. And so I wanted to come down acknowledging that I thought that there was some feelings...
We had consensus that it had to be a minimum.
Yeah.
A minimum, not even.
Well, it's 90 days. No, it's not a minimum. It can't be a minimum because if you say it's a minimum, somebody could say a year and a half later, well, I want to still bid.
Yeah.
That wouldn't be a good thing to do.
That wasn't what I meant. What I meant was...
It'll be all of 90 days.
It will be 90 days.
Yes.
Or we could put 120 days in there or we could put whatever we want in there.
You could put a thousand days in there.
We haven't, that's right. Well, come on, you know.
No, it's anything you want, is my point.
90 days.
Yep, okay.
I'm comfortable with 90 days.
Okay. And that's what I was trying to do.
Ms. Coker?
Just a question. Just one thing is I would, because I would like to see a lot of specificity in the proposals that come. And I don't know if it's appropriate to put it in there saying that, you know, that we'd like to see drawings, that we'd like to, and I'd also, I don't know if this as well...
It's not.
What?
I want to get to that because that would be the next phase. This isn't going to be pick one that's the best one. I think when these come in, the council will have the opportunity to begin a discussion and a dialogue with two or three, or four or five, or whatever it might be, proposed developments that look attractive. And you would want more detail at that point, but to start with, since we're going nationwide, we have to hone it down to who's got the qualifications, the wherewithal, stands ready, willing and able to perform, has that kind of thing. And so this isn't, this isn't just pick the best one. This is going to be an opportunity to discuss.
I think it's opportunity. Nobody else was here. Patrick and I were here when we did the parking garage. We had that same way. They brought in three bids and then they brought in their proposals and we listened to all three with the diagrams and the drawings and all that. And then we picked it, so.
So we're not going to pick one from these?
Ultimately, it's possible, but I would imagine the next step is to get these bids in. They'll be opened in public down here pursuant to the notice after 90 days. And then what I'll do is I'll basically take them and try to get you what I think are recommended, you know, the best three, four, whatever you tell me to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, because part of...
And then we get to specifics.
And part of my...
And you're right about specifics. Yes, ma'am.
Part of what I want to consider is, are they going to ask for impact fee credits? And so the financing part of it, and so, but that won't be at this stage, you're saying?
No, it will not be. Those are policy matters that I completely respect the province of the council to make decisions on. And what I'd like to do is give you a panoply, you know, a variety of different proposals that I think meet most of what you all are kind of interested in and then say, let's get more detail on that and hone down the selection process. Really, the selection process is fairly up to you for this kind of thing.
Mr. Sanders and Mr. Roth?
That was the intent I had by the last economic study. I would like to, you know, suggest that we have no waiver of impact fees and no forgiveness of adblocker taxes because that takes out the revenue that, we can't promise a big revenue and then give it away. So, and if we don't address that before, I as a bidder on this would like to know that, well, you're going to give me an incentive to build this hotel or whatever it might be. Yes or no? Okay. Now, we can decide that at a later point, I suppose, but I think now we're just looking for, what's this land worth? What's this, because if they're going to tear it down, what's this land worth today and nationwide? And I'm happy with that. But to throw in incentives at this early stage, I'm opposed to any incentives because that just takes away the purpose of, that you just took away why we built this thing with sitting here not producing income. And I'm a big believer in income and City Hall shouldn't have been here. I agree with that, but that's hindsight.
Right.
Foresight is whatever is built here, future forward, has to pay taxes in order to justify us going and spending more money to replace this.
Mr. Roth?
And that's a really good point, Mr. Sanders. Because, you know, and the one thing we don't know, we don't know whether we're going to get three offers or 300 offers. My guess is we're going to get a lot of offers because we have a very, very, very rare property. And in the rules of real estate, that's, all bets are off when it's rare. So we, and should it go in at this point in time, that should, should no financial incentives be in there right now? Because we really, I don't want 300 offers with sharks from Chicago, you know, to where I've got to, you know, this is, we're willing to part with the city's most precious value, this rare site on the water, right across from Marina, in beautiful sunny Florida, you know, right south of Tampa Bay. I mean, this thing's got everything going for it. I don't think we have to give anybody anything. We're willing to sell you the property. That's what we're willing to give you. And should that be in here at this point so that we don't get the tire kickers that want to see how low they can get the used car for, you know, it's like...
My initial response was, don't limit it down, but I think you've convinced me that perhaps it should. You could make a statement in that the city is not contemplating any financial incentives of this valuable property. And I can modify it with that. And that's, that's not a bad policy statement to make right now because I agree with it.
It'll weed it down because...
Like you said, though, that is very important from the standpoint of, I think our two unsolicited offers don't have anything in them already. So we've already got that process started. And again, if we come out of it and we see zero offers, then we might have to sweeten the pot a little bit, you know, if it comes down to it, if that's what we want to do. But no, I think from the standpoint of going forward, you know, you can say, your highest and best use is going to be what this economic statement says and then here's what we're asking for.
My, just so my point is, and to my most, that if this goes out nationwide, as, you know, it is stated, I think we're going to have more offers than we, than we need and to weed that down into real legitimate offers is better.
It'll be easier. Mrs. Coker?
Yeah, that was my point. It's, I want to be able to consider price and terms, not just price, not just, okay, I'll give you the, because it's going to be a package. And do we like what their proposal is? I mean, what they want to put here, you know? That's, that was my point.
20 years ago, we had to do something. Now, were there Mr. Sanders and then Ms. Barnaby?
I think that there were people that came to the table.
Go ahead.
Can I just, there were people that had come to the table back when we were more desperate. We don't have to keep doing the same thing.
Good statement. I agree with you. The, correct me if I'm wrong, one proposal did have, did ask for a lot of incentives. Am I wrong about that?
I don't.
I think one didn't ask for any.
I think the House of Representatives is correct.
I think one did ask for a lot of incentives.
The other group mentioned that there was incentives. It didn't give details on it.
Yeah, there was not enough details, but they did ask for, okay.
But it wasn't the most detailed, right? It wasn't anything they were asking specific.
Well, it's too early in the game really to ask for specifics.
Ms. Coachman had a comment.
I was just, I just wanted to say, I agree with you, you know, we don't have to sweeten the pot just yet because it may be sweet enough. So.
All right. Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you. It is exciting to hear the council realize how important and valuable our downtown is because I, again, Mr. Gallows in the audience, you can remember where elected officials were saying things like Bradenton ain't never going to be nothing but a government center. And when we were talking about originally looking at what would be going on, what was derogatorily called the sand pile at the time, I remember making a statement that I truly hoped that Bradenton could get to the point where we did not act like a spinster who'd been stuck on the shelf and got her skirts in a twist anytime any man happened to look her way. That may be happening today and that, I'm sorry, makes me feel very, very proud of our city, our residents and our, and our...
Bad analogy.
But it was true. It was true. Anytime somebody would come in and say, well, I think we'd look at doing this and everybody would be, oh, well, we give you this and this and this and this. We don't have to do that now.
Ms. Coker?
I'd like to make a motion to allow the city administrator to move forward with the nationwide advertising of a notice of considered disposition, invitation to offer proposals for purchase of real property.
I'll second it if she will accept a friendly amendment that says additionally that we will have a statement in there saying that the city will not be offering development incentives during this process.
I will allow.
Can we be specific on development incentives to include impact fees, adblocker tax?
That's all.
Or permitting, any, or is just general cost to cover all that?
I think the way it was worded by Councilor Barnaby is really the best way to go, generic, because it includes all those things.
I mean, what, because there's going to be certain incentives that are entitled to any property. Do we not give those up? I mean, you know, I mean...
Right. I think development incentives is the right term to use. It's a really good word, yeah. We may end up having to move a pipe or something, you know?
Correct. There'll be minor stuff.
Motion is second.
Did the maker of the motion accept my friendly amendment?
Yes, it did.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Approved five to zero. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council for that. I know it was, it's an important subject. It's an important subject and it's the one that has the potential to shape the future of this city. And it relies on a significant piece of the past of the city.
If history repeats itself, it has the potential of getting rid of every one of us.
I didn't vote.
I like to look at the glass as half full, but that's just me.
At my house, it's just another glass I have to wash.
Right, okay. We're going to move on to some of the issues related to the capital development plan, preliminary matters. Again, none of these are authorizing the construction or other development. Next matter is going to be, if we can go through the capital development plan, my team's been working really hard on it. You've seen the folks upstairs. We're constantly having meetings, reaching out to people and the like. Jim's folks doing the same thing, obviously in coordination with us as well as everybody else. Moving forward, the next matter is the architecture and engineering RFP authorization for a proposed City Hall, which is basically if we are going to look at the potential of leaving this location, we need to start doing a little bit of modeling on how much, where, what it would look like with new City Hall. We have an unsolicited offer that looks at a remodel project, which is very viable. There's also some other locations in town that was referred to earlier that the city owns. And if I could go through the slides and go to the next one if we could, I'm going to bypass this and maybe come back to it. This is Dr. Parker's article in the Sarasota Herald Tribune. And he basically said, they asked him, what do you see happening in Tampa Bay area, Florida nationally with the economy and developments? He takes both a macro and a micro look. He shortened, short, he says, look, inflation's already here. You can expect a recession, probably be fairly mild, different from 2008. And we have garnered the storm quite well here in central southwest Flor, in the Tampa Bay area. And there's a lot of things we could do to mitigate any significant downside financial impact. But it's a really good article that I was hoping that I had sent to you. He spoke, Dr. Parker spoke down in Venice and it was in last, I want to say last Friday's newspaper.
His name is Dr. Parrish on your slide.
I'm sorry, Dr. Parrish. The fellow's name is Parker. Thank you. And like, if we go to the next slide...
Not this guy.
Right.
No.
No.
Here.
Yep. Go to the next slide, right. And so here we have the proposed City Hall Center project, possible sites. Go to the next page if you could. Right now, and these are just, these are just kind of what we have available now. There's no decision or preference or whatever. The one as I referred to came in the unsolicited offer for Baccarat Partners. That's the old Bradenton Herald building. We own the property down at Sixth Avenue West and Second and Third Street, which of course is located right by where the police department's area is. We talked to Jim. There might be some opportunity to develop a City Hall property there next to the police department or clearing some of that land with some of the unused structures. Add to the parcels.
The problem that we might be getting ahead of it?
The 30 days is how long it would be on the street.
I understand that.
Right. In order to get to that part, we have to get these folks together with Tammy and the folks from purchasing and do everything else. With all due respect to our abilities, capacity, throughput, whatever, it takes a little time to do that around here, I've noticed. Perhaps you have too. Yeah. And so when you say, when you're trying to be precise on timing, I think we'd get to it really quick and try to get it done. Get it on the street, get a selection committee, get a recommendation of award after we do best and final. The recommendation of award comes to you guys. Well, then we go back and do best and final. And then the contract comes to you and then they start doing work. If they got you slotted. The work on this is actually doing the A, E and D, the architecture, engineering and design work, just a 30%. My experience is, but he knows this a lot better than I do, probably four months, best case scenario, 90 days. And I might be...
Then in 90 days.
Yeah.
You're looking at...
From the time, from the time you sign a contract with a firm to do the work, to get you to 30% design is going to be in that timeframe.
I wish the Riverwalk had moved that fast. It didn't.
It probably got to 30% design.
Let's see. That was four years ago.
Mr. Roth?
So, I mean, wouldn't the space study already give us a leg up on the fact that we already know...
So, I, I mean, wouldn't the space study already give us a leg up on the fact that we already know what we need? I mean, is that something that they would be doing?
It does cut out one phase.
I, I mean, I...
It tells you how much square footage you want. It doesn't tell you what that square footage looks like.
Right. Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. But if, if we, if we didn't have that, they'd probably be starting off with measuring our, measuring our buildings.
Absolutely.
So...
Ideally, Mr. Perry and I have talked about the idea that whatever design is developed is transportable to different sites.
Right, exactly. I agree with, I agree with that. Have we looked at other possibility properties? For example, in, in my ward, there's a, a huge building that's, you know, seven and a half million dollars that can be converted probably for two or three million, four million.
The answer is no, we haven't.
We haven't looked at that.
More obvious properties, I think, is the best way.
We actually own, not that we'd have purchased.
In this case, that we own.
Yeah, that's raw, that's raw land. This, this is...
They have to be in the city.
This would speed the process up if we looked at an existing building that can be converted. Mr. Allen has suggested that, which that should be considered because that, that is a quicker turnaround probably than starting from scratch. I don't know that, but I mean, that, but we need, I think we need to be vetting that a little bit before we start a design because there may be something out there that, that we haven't looked at. Like I say, I know of a couple of buildings that, that are existing now that should probably take a serious look at. One of them is what Mr. Allen's proposed, that's one. The other one is, you got one in my ward that's, that's empty building that's in the county now that is not being taxed, so that would be a good, you know. We don't wanna gain either way on that one, so it's, you know, pretty close to the new fire station out there. I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying. A problem that we might be getting ahead of it?
Thirty days is how long it would be on the street.
I understand that.
Right. In order to get to that part, we have to get these folks together with Tammy and the folks from purchasing and do everything else. With all due respect to our abilities, capacity, throughput, whatever, it takes a little time to do that around here, I've noticed. Perhaps you have too. Yeah. And so when you say, when you're trying to be precise on timing, I think we'd get to it really quick and try to get it done. Get it on the street, get a selection committee, get a recommendation of award after we do best and final. The recommendation of award comes to you guys. Well, then we go back and do best and final. And then the contract comes to you and then they start doing work. If, if they got you slotted. The work on this is actually doing the A, E, and D, the architecture, engineering, and design work, just a thirty percent. My experience is, but he knows this a lot better than I do, probably four months, best case scenario, ninety days. And I might be piped.
Then that in ninety days.
Yeah.
You're looking at sixteen months.
From the time, from the time you sign a contract with a firm to do the work, to get you to thirty percent design is, is gonna be in that timeframe.
I wish the Riverwalk had moved that fast. It didn't.
It probably got to ninety, it probably got to thirty percent design.
Let's see. That was four years ago.
So, I, I mean, wouldn't the space study already give us a leg up on the fact that we already know what we need? I mean, is that something that they would be doing?
It does cut out one phase.
I, I mean, I...
It tells you how much square footage you want. It doesn't tell you what that square footage looks like.
Right. Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. But if, if we, if we didn't have that, they'd probably be starting off with measuring our, measuring our buildings.
Absolutely.
So...
I mean, ideally, Mr. Perry and I have talked about the idea that whatever design is developed is transportable to different sites.
Right, exactly. I agree with, I agree with that. Have we looked at other possibility properties? For example, in, in my ward, there's a, a huge building that's, you know, seven and a half million dollars that can be converted probably for two or three million, four million.
The answer is no, we haven't.
We haven't looked at that.
More obvious properties, I think, is the best way.
We actually own, not that we'd have purchased.
In this case, that we own.
Yeah, that's raw, that's raw land. This, this is...
They have to be in the city.
This would speed the process up if we looked at an existing building that can be converted. Mr. Allen has suggested that, which that should be considered because that, that is a quicker turnaround probably than starting from scratch. I don't know that, but I mean, that, but we need, I think we need to be vetting that a little bit before we start a design because there may be something out there that, that we haven't looked at. Like I say, I know of a couple of buildings that, that are existing now that should probably take a serious look at. One of them is what Mr. Allen's proposed, that's one. The other one is, you got one in my ward that's, that's empty building that's in the county now that is not being taxed, so that would be a good, you know. We don't wanna gain either way on that one, so it's, you know, pretty close to the new fire station out there. I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying, can we please look at other properties?
That would take probably the better part of, I would imagine, six months. I mean, because as you're asking that question, we could.
Well, I told the guy...
What I would have to do is establish some sort of committee and then we go out and try to find all the vacant property in the city. And, and, and say, "Okay, let's talk about how much you might be willing to take, but I don't know if my city council really wants to buy property for three or four million dollars for a parcel this size." I mean, we can go in that direction, but what I can do, my opinion is that if we do start looking at some citywide search of all possible sites, that is such a broad directive that that is gonna be quite time-consuming and probably not net the results that you want because at the end of the day, you're gonna have to buy the property, opposed to property that we already own. That's, that's my only point.
Well, we have one proposal on the table that, that could be relatively quick. Not saying that, I'm not suggesting or in favor of it one way or the other. But I know of another property I made a phone call with and it, it started, and the price is a seven and a half million dollars.
Right.
It's gonna require probably three million dollars worth of renovations. So those are two very quick, could happen. We can make an offer on them tomorrow.
What we should do is call them back and tell them to put an offer in with us to give, to give us that as a trade.
I was gonna suggest that to you, but I've been a little bit busy.
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah. What, what I would say though is I, I think it could, should be happening at the same time. So that you bring us your building and your ward, but I wanna know what a brand-new building would be called.
I'm not doing it because it's my ward. It's anywhere that's...
No, I know. I know. I'm just saying, I don't wanna hold this up.
No.
I wanna do both. I mean, and I'm just gonna throw out there, I mean, maybe this is not, but what about us just being leasing space? I mean, do we have to own a building? I mean, how does that, I mean, if buildings are, are no longer viable after twenty years? I mean, is, I'm sure one of these economists can figure those numbers. I mean, I don't know. But I think, I, I mean, I'm getting close to wanting to call the question on the motion.
Yeah, so, so we have a motion.
Yeah.
To approve by you and then Mr. Roth's second. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to amend, ask to amend the motion to that we simultaneously look at other properties that might be available and might be able to find something prior to, because we're not talking about two hundred thousand here. We're talking about five hundred thousand. There's another three hundred thousand for the police station. This is two hundred thousand. So we're talking about a half a million dollars we might spend and not use this and that, that concerns me.
Well, okay, we're not approving the two hundred thousand right now. We're just approving the request for a proposal. Well, yeah, there's a motion for the request, a motion for the request to put out an RFP.
Well, we have to put out RFP for both because this building's gonna be sold. If it's gonna be sold, we have to do the, the police and the fi, or the police and the, this section at the same time and it's just a half a million dollars.
Mr. Perry, can you clarify? I'm just gonna say clarify.
I'm gonna stop talking.
Well, but I think...
Well, is that not true?
I, I don't know. I, I get confused.
I mean, I think we're...
And that's why, if I don't understand...
We're throwing too much into the mix.
Right, too much into the motion. That's why I was gonna say, Ms. Coker, it is to approve that thirty percent drawings and we have to get to that step.
Yeah.
So if, but again, if we keep pushing it down the road, you're gonna get developers that aren't even gonna wanna apply because they're looking at five years down the road. You have to keep that process going. And, and again, sometimes, as we know, and you know, my financial wherewithal is not to waste money, but you have to spend money to get down that next step. And that's where, you know, we've, we've got the opportunity to do that and it's gonna be weighed up.
I think I misspoke because I do feel like in order to decide if, I'm just saying this, the building that you found, in order to make that decision between that building and the other one, we need to have a little bit more information. And that's why we gotta do the study.
That's where developers are gonna have the opportunity to bring to us
Exactly.
that opportunity and then we would have to vet that at that moment. Mr. Roth?
Yeah, I just wanna remind everyone that we just, you know, made a, a decision to move forward on finding whether there's an interest in this and it has a twenty-four month window to get us moved. So we, I mean, we can look at all things, but we need to get started on, we know we've got one site where a developer will remodel. We've got two, two other sites we can build on. If there's another one out there and someone's interested, they call us up and make an offer. We've already accepted, well, we've already looked at unsolicited offers, but, but we do have a twenty-four month window that this is, this was my concern when the whole conversation started, which I didn't start, was that not only does it, it's gonna take time, we need to know where we're going, and then someone has to have time to build said building we're gonna move into. And that's not an easy feat in this day and age, so...
Ms. Coachman, Ms. Coachman first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to just add in too, as we're thinking about locations, that we need to think about proximity in terms of our citizens. I mean, right now, city hall is kinda central, maybe not, but, but I don't, I feel like we should still try to stay in a kinda happy medium also, not go strictly out east, strictly out west. Just keep that in mind.
Yep, thank you.
I agree, but I want, I want clarification here. We, if this, this building doesn't include just city hall site, includes the police site. So we have to do both. Is that not correct? I mean, we have to, I mean, if we're gonna sell this thing in twenty-four months or whatever, we have to relocate both entities and so shouldn't we be doing both at the same time simultaneously?
Well, yes, other than the fact that somebody could put a proposal in, say, "I wanna do half this site" and then sequence into the second half and I give you more time. I mean, there's endless possibilities and everything's negotiable, but...
That's when it comes down to the determination of the best offer. The best offer might not be financial only, it might be the design.
Remember when you buy something, you buy it for two reasons, price and value, and they're two separate things. The value might be, "It works better for us." The price might be, "We get more." So don't be surprised if that's the judgments that you have to make ultimately in this...
So we have a motion in a second, so I'm gonna call for the vote, starting in Ward four.
I, I offered a friendly amendment to that.
I did not hear a lot of support for it, so...
She did amend or does not take it?
You don't accept it.
I don't wanna amend it, even...
Ward four?
Without that vote, no.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three? Carrie's four to one. Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Next matter.
Excuse me, Mayor. METV requested we take a short recess of five minutes so they can...
Change the batteries. All right, we'll recess till eleven forty-five. Let's come back right at eleven forty-five. Thank you. All right, we're gonna call the meeting back to order, eleven forty-five. Mr. Perry?
Sir, Council? Next matter of business is the proposed police department complex. This, we're looking at Sixth Avenue West, Second and Third Street. Architecture, engineering, design, thirty percent, what we're seeking. Part of the space study, obsolescence of the building, the propriety of it being down here on the waterfront. And in order to move forward, we believe we're gonna have to move with that architecture and engineering pretty much at the same pace that we do with city hall. Because as was pointed out in the prior discussion, you got two major components of city government here, administrative component and a public safety police component. So we're asking for, for that and I believe that request is for three hundred thousand dollars.
So it's very similar, just a different building?
Right.
All right. Questions, a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I motion, make a motion to authorize the city administrator to begin the RFP process and obtain an architecture, engineering, and design firm for the proposed police complex and authorization to advertise, and it's cut off there, whatever you're supposed to advertise. Sorry.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward five.
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yeah.
What are we voting on?
We're voting on the...
PD.
RFP.
PD, same RFP. So a motion of...
Hold on a second. We're voting on what?
The motion to, for the PD. We went through it, so it's four...
The three hundred thousand?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. I thought you didn't wanna, I thought you didn't wanna do both at the same time.
No, the, the motion's on the floor and seconding it and it's four to zero right now. What's, I need your vote.
I agree to do both at the same, yes.
Okay, so, so five, four votes yes, I guess then, so five to zero.
If I understand it right.
Yep, yep, so, all right.
Well, I'll clarify, I'm not so sure that I was out.
Yep.
I used the restroom, so...
All right, so, Mr. Perry?
The, the next matter basically is going to be the, the, the police annex. And, and what this is basically is it's a proposal to do some architecture, engineering, to look at the old Red Cross built, building out on Fifty-Ninth Street. It's currently hurricane-rated, cat four. It meets a lot of what we think could be programmatic needs that could help the police department scale down the size of what they need in a new station. They could do things like store evidence out there sufficiently according to the chief, large vehicle storage when vehicles involved in vehicular homicides and have evidentiary value have to be maintained within a chain of custody and the like. Different types of things with our CSI, crime scene and the like. And we think that there's a value to this because if we could put major space components into an alternative location, we wouldn't have to build them anew, basically. And that's, that's what's before Council.
Mr. Roth? Yeah, my, my thinking is, 'cause we've talked about the fact that PD can go down to where, where our water plant is.
Right, where Sixth Avenue...
There's plenty, plenty of room down there. Plenty of, and then also, I mean, I, I, look, I, I'm all for looking at the Red Cross and what we can do for it. I'm thinking of, you know, a hurricane safety building. I mean, so that we don't have to go to the, to the county, you know, maybe, maybe we want to, maybe we don't. I'm kind of, I, I think we should try to keep PD contained, contained in one unit. I think, you know, if, if we're saying we're gonna look at this building for purposes, that's one thing. But dedicating it towards a PD annex, I, I think that should be included in the same. We, we've got lots of space where we're, where we're, you know, the one site that we absolutely know of that PD can go to.
Yes, sir.
There's, there's plenty of space and there's even, there's even property next door that's been sitting vacant for, for reasons, for many years, that could probably be gotten for next to nothing that I hate to be spreading out, you know.
The police function.
Yeah, and also, and also if they're gonna be storing, you know, if they're gonna be storing, like we're saying, police storage facility, you know, vehicles or stuff like that, well, that'll fly on our city-owned property. You start storing building, you know, stuffed over by G.P. Bray Park, you're kinda trashing the neighborhood, you know?
Right.
That, I, I just, I, do we have to have it?
I, I think I, I misspoke a little bit because I jumped to police annex. Primary, the, the primary purpose or shared purpose, I should say, is as an EEOC, an emergency operations center.
Can we scratch PD police annex off that and just...
I can do that.
Point of order. We're skipping around here a little bit and I was using the restroom. I like the one I just voted on.
Hold on one second.
Because there's a little confusion. Well, no, I wanna know where we're at on this agenda, why you, you moved something around while I was outside.
We didn't move it out. We re, convened the meeting at eleven forty-five, like we said.
Okay.
Mr. Perry did a presentation.
Okay.
There was a motion and a...
Presentation was on what?
It was on the...
The police department, the architecture, engineering, and Sixth Street First.
Of Sixth Street. That's what I voted on, that, which was the same exact thing I amended. I thought we could join the two together.
Yeah.
For, so that's total of five hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. Now we're on the Red Cross building at Fifty-Ninth. It's hard to understand some of the language here versus me...
So I have Mrs. Barnaby and Mrs. Coker.
I understand. I just wanna know where we're at on, on the agenda.
No, I, I'm... No, I, I'm...
And I, and I, and for the record, I don't like, uh, uh, when a council person walks out, that we have a vote.
We, we had a recess at 11:34 a.m., and we came back at 11:45, and we reset, we came back to the meeting at 11:45.
This is not the first time that's happened, I'm, I'm...
But if you leave the room during a meeting, that's, that's your choice, not ours. Miss, Mr. Roth, did you have something to follow up, or did you want Mrs. Barnaby?
No, I mean, I, so, my, my question was, can we just move it towards EDC and just kinda slash police annex for now?
Yes, yes, and I'd be more than willing to do that.
EEOC, okay, okay.
And that's where I was going, Mr. Mayor, was I understood that we were looking at setting up, in a hurricane-hardened area, to have our emergency operations. In the past, years ago, Manatee County had their emergency operations center in our downtown, and they very wisely chose to move out of the floodplain and to design a building that will operate as their EOC, as, and a few other things occurring there. We never really had an EOC. We would have our emergency meetings over at the fire station, because it was one of the newer buildings, and it was hardened to a certain degree. I see this as a critical need, because it's not if we get hit by a hurricane anymore, I think it's gonna be of when we get hit by a hurricane, and that we need to have our emergency services in a hardened shelter to be able to conduct the services that we will need to do at that time.
And I think that was one of the things that was originally talked about with the chief. It wasn't to utilize it as a police station, it was utilized as the EOC, and if there was some other opportunities there, because of the space, they could utilize it, and as well as we do need during a hurricane, even if we are at the EOC with the county, we still need a presence on that side of town, because we have it on the other, so, no, that was, that's part of that, so, yes, ma'am.
I would think I was next, right?
Yes.
Okay. And also, I think we have to have this in order to know what we aren't gonna need. I, I appreciate not spreading everything all around.
Right.
But I think if they don't need that space in the new BPD complex, that it makes sense to have this already going.
But, but, you, you're, well, and my thought is that if we're designing, we have a land where there's plenty, we have land, there's plenty of land. They're designing a building. I believe they should design the building for what they need, including, like, I've watched storage move around. I, I've been here long enough that, that if, if, if PD has the option to grab some space, they will. I'd rather keep this for our emergency operations center, and just not put it on the table that it's there. We're designing a building right now, we have land, design what you need, where you need it.
And I think the police annex is a bad synopsis on that.
Probably a bad term.
Because it's really, it's an EOC.
It's, it's, it needs to be done as an EOC.
Beautiful.
Several questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Sanders.
Uh, we've never used the EOC since I've been here, and we've had a couple threats of hurricanes, so, Manatee County, I believe, has taken the lead on this, and they have a very good facility that I have been at during those times, and so, have we considered a cooperative agreement between us and the city, or us and the county, that we could share that, that's, that eliminates this expense? I understand the police department wants to have a storage of, of items, but I'm, I'm kind of opposed to that being separated from police department, because now are they gonna ask for another person to be manned out there to guard it, and then, then that, then that, then that storage of evidence now becomes exposed if there is a hurricane, that now we're out there with possibly, and who's gonna use it? And if we've never used it, the question is, if we've never used it, why do we need one now? The second question is, the county has one, why can't we share it? Third question is, what is, we're gonna, I don't know why it's called a police, the EOC is everything, that's fire, and I think they need to have some input to it, I don't know if they've done that or not, and, what was the cost of doing this?
$150,000.
Uh, to just do the plan?
I believe so.
And, and I haven't heard a figure on...
I don't know if it's gonna be the up to...
Up to another $150,000 for an architectural, uh, uh, footprint?
Right.
And then, have we got an estimate, a round estimate like we do on the, the other buildings? I mean, what are we talking about, 10 million?
Oh, no, no.
Five million?
Probably closer to three to four.
Three to four million?
Quite honestly, on a remodel, probably closer to two. It's already, it's already concrete block with rebar and, you know, and everything else that makes it Cat Four. But let me just take a couple of questions, try to provide some answers, that, first off, I think it's moot, because we're not talking about a police station anymore. I think I have pretty clear direction, that most of the council would like to see it developed conceptually as an EEOC. Now, I'll go to the county. We have a cooperative agreement with the county, county is the lead for local government with emergency management. In the event of a hurricane, I think we've all watched him on CNN or Fox or whatever news we watch, and usually FEMA comes in with the folks that...
I'm sorry, I'm just suggesting...
Keep pushing it up.
Sure. During the emergency itself, in advance of the emergency, the governor's on TV about every hour, I think, and the like. But the issue becomes, after the TV cameras leave, the city of Bradenton, they might have financial, um, support mechanisms becoming available through the various emergency declarations, but we gotta get busy doing the work. And doing that work of, of recovery from that type of event needs to be centrally located at a facility capable of coordinating this. What I like strategically about this is what Councilor Barnaby had pointed out, is that, one, it's closer to the water, where we have vulnerabilities, lowlands and the like. This particular location on 59th Street is hurricane-rated, I think it's one of the highest points in the city, and it's right next to where the new fire station. And so, I could see that if we do get hit, we're probably gonna set up a, a heck of an operation within a couple of days, a couple of weeks, and start putting back the pieces, putting back together the pieces of the puzzle.
And there's only certain people that can go to the county EOC.
Right, that's it.
This is gonna be our EOC, plus, we have used that in the past as an EOC, since Red Cross left it.
Right.
Red Cross, I believe we used a collaboration with them when we had it, and we've used it. Now, it's changed, for the fire station has been living in it now, till they...
Yeah, yeah, it's a temporary.
So, it has been, it has been utilized over the years for what we need since it took it over.
Well, and I, I remember when the county EOC was built, and went down and toured it and everything, it, it truly is a very nice building, it's a state-of-the-art building, it's county building.
Mm-hmm.
Owns, it's, the county owns it. And then also, what happens is, is if a hurricane comes, 'cause I've seen this happen, the state moves in, the governor moves in, basically, everyone comes in and grabs real estate, and guess who, guess who gets kicked out?
And is out in the hallway.
Right.
That would be us, yeah.
Right.
And, and this is self-determination.
Governor just showed off the...
Yeah, because I think we have to be prepared, I agree with you. When the TV cameras leave, then it's time that the work gets done.
Yeah, Mr. Sanders.
Do we have an EOC plan?
Uh, we do, we have a very, very detailed one, that's coordinated with county, with FEMA, the state EOC.
I mean, just for the serious, it obviously has to be in cooperation, because you can't have, you know...
Right, and, and then, and then our police department and, and our fire department, from what I understand, ha, ha, does have one, that they're constantly working on.
They're the only ones I knew that had one.
These facilities typically aren't, I mean, if you gotta use it, you got a problem, right?
Absolutely.
So, it's gotta be, it's gotta be the standards that we can operate out of.
Right, but, but, but what we do is, we train, and train, and train, and, and that's what makes us good at being ready for emergency preparedness, is what you talked about, a plan and preparation.
Right, I think we need to start with the plan, but I haven't seen it, but, it, is, is our, I'd just like to see it, is our, um, dispatch located at the, it's located at the county. Where at in the county, is it located at this EOC?
At their dispatch center.
In the EOC building, yeah.
EOC building, so, we're already taking part of that now for the EOC building of the county, so that's where major operations is. I still think that, that we need to look at that, if we can share that, versus the expensive cost to the taxpayers.
We do share it.
And, and if we, if we got enough money that, that's, we're just floating around here, boy, this, this bill won't, but we never had to have it, I don't think we've ever utilized it.
Well, we've got two of our professionals here, and before Mr. Perry started, when we had a situation, we actually, I called, because there was a transition between our old administrator and Mr. Perry, we called an EOC meeting and staff, and came together with our fire department, our police department, to have that...
And I appreciate that, because they were, they had one.
Well, we, yeah, all, all of them had one.
I don't think we really had one for other operations.
Oh, yeah, with Public Works, with everything else. We, it was, when, when Irma came through...
I heard, but that was the first, well, that was one of the only times that, since I've been here, that we had, that was organized by the PD and fire, on the P, on the, on the side, but, because I'd never seen us do that before.
I wanna get to Mrs. Barnaby's comment first.
Well, I can remember when Manatee County set up their EOC, where they set it up. There isn't, not a lot of empty room out there for us to be able to set up tables and chairs and try to conduct business.
There what?
The, you know, the county planned for the county, and they planned to have, the ability to have meetings where a representative from particular municipalities would be attending. And it's not that we could all go in there and start operating the city out of, they're not set up for that.
And we might have to have an emergency meeting to get together to take care of things, and they are not, at the EOC, they do not invite us.
No.
Right.
We would have our own, plus, we need our own for our staff, for everybody that...
Well, I, I really wanna reinforce the, the statement of, "We need the own for our own staff." Okay, so, at the most recent hurricane exercise over at the public safety complex, we had to do a lot of it virtually, 'cause they just don't have the space. Now, I will tell you that other fire districts in the county each have identified their own EOCs, as you put it, and they're set up and ready to go. I just met with West Manatee yesterday, they're taking care of all the barrier islands, they're gonna be able to meet, and we also talked about our hope of the, um, Old Red Cross for the city needs. Uh, so, you know, call it poli, or call it police and fire, but I really hope you focus on the EOC portion of it, because the city needs to maintain its own structure during an event, like Mr. Perry said, and we just, as, as you stated, the old fire station, it's not rated for what this would be. And then, you know, we have to maintain during the event, know that all of you are in a safe location, and then also in the days after. So, that's what we really need this for primarily, I think the police chief would back that up, and, uh, so really, you know, maintaining that focus on that building.
I agree with you, sir, and I'm, and I'm, I'm not saying I'm against an EOC, I'm looking at the big picture here of 10 million, 20 million for a new police department, 5 million here, 5 million, we, we, I think we're way above what, what we've been presented in the capital budget, and I don't know where the money's gonna come from. So, we may have to prioritize some of this stuff, so now, I wanna see the whole picture, not just pits and pieces here. What's it gonna cost us for all these studies? What's it gonna cost us for all this architectural work that hopefully we'll use? What's it gonna cost us to build all these buildings that we're proposing to do, that we probably should've been doing a piecemeal, one at a time, just like our infrastructure of $10 million that was, and, Mr. Perry, don't take this as an insult to you, 'cause this is way before you was here, way before I was here, you know? But we've got people that's complaining, come, call me up and say, "My area stinks, because we don't have the infrastructure for the sewers." And that's in Ward Four and Ward Five primarily. So, I just think, you know, granted, we need an EOC, I don't disagree with you, I just don't know if we can pay for all these things that we're discussing.
I was out on a conference call, so I didn't get to hear everybody's comments, but my assistant chief filled me in on yours, and so, what I would tell you is that this building provides a unique opportunity to do a couple things. It, it houses an EOC for the city, which we've never really had one that was hardened and, and safe, a place where, not requiring you all to come in, but at least a place where the chief and I can come together, we can do, you know, engage in mutual aid if, if a disaster strikes, you know, rally resources, whatnot. We can't do that over at the county building. None of you all would be invited, they don't have the room, even, we're not invited, they, they simply don't have the room. Reciprocally, our issue, and, and, you know, what I was tasked with, with both Mr. Perry and the mayor, is think creatively when it comes to building a new police station, and to your point, I, I think sometimes we forget, although it's been discussed here, where a lot of our stuff is. It's not just over at the police department, it's in the auditorium, it's over at Public Works, um, it's kind of all over the place, and if this building is not here, then it's not simply the footprint we have right now over at the police department, we would have to take into account a much larger facility to, to house this stuff. What a great opportunity to not only put, you know, the couple people who are in charge of collecting evidence over there, with all the, the equipment they use, that can be a little sketchy sometimes with fumes and whatnot, in, in a place that's hardened, that's a lot safer, but also put some of our most precious evidence over there, because we know it's a hardened facility, we, we know it's safer, we know it's not gonna experience flood. I don't think a standalone EOC is, is necessarily a sustainable idea, I mean, it would be wasteful. We'd have this building sitting there 24/7, waiting for something, you know, what we're looking at, in cooperation with the fire department, is having a facility that is dual-purposed. The mayor and I have a meeting tomorrow with some community members, and he's like, "Well, we'll meet over at your office," and I said, "No, we really can't do that, because they'd have to come up into the second floor, we'd have to screen everybody, so we're all gonna wedge in to the little conference room on the second floor." What a great opportunity for also a community meeting there, that has different rules of engagement, because of siege concerns and whatnot. I would just hope you let your public safety experts put it to the best public safety use possible, and I will tell you, there will not be a square foot that will be wasted. And anything we can use in this facility will save in the new facility, if we get a new facility. And, and my concern is doing the most we can with, with the money we're gonna get appropriated, you know, and I don't wanna take up that money building warehouse, secure warehouse space. So, that's, that's my two cents.
Have questions?
Mr. Sanders?
Um, are your, is your intention to put the 911 services over there and move it out of the county? Or could you? Or could you?
They're there to stay, they're at the county to stay, it's, it makes sense.
But you're talking about not using the building, and wouldn't that be, how many people is that, 20, 30? In our 911 services?
Uh, right now, we have 12.
12, all right. Have we considered joining that with, uh, saving us a million dollars a year to, and combine that with the county?
You mean, doing away with our...
Doing away with our own individual 911 services, it seems to overlap the county.
So, it, it doesn't, it doesn't, the, the county doesn't have police dispatch, and...
Many counties use that as a joint effort between police, fire, and EMS, so that one, one, one group of people has the entire map and dispatch it out to the appropriate departments, and now we've divided the pie, and it's cost us about a million bucks a year.
What costs us a million dollars?
Your 911 services for the city only.
I mean, that's certainly something both the chief and I can, can talk about, I mean, we, we have 12 people right there, we, we're kinda hurting on personnel, but part of the move over there is to help save on space, but to really improve, improve the quality of service we're giving our citizens. We're kind of an outdated model, only because we've had to by necessity, my dispatchers have to answer a 911 call, and try to accomplish both at the same time. What we've already done with the county when it comes to fire 911 calls, is that they're going to begin picking those up, but this is all a process that takes time, and that's why we moved them over there a few months ago. The model you talk about can't be done at this point, they don't have that kind of personnel, they don't have that kind of training when it comes to police dispatch, they don't do anything police-related. Now, they do some fire related things, and that is a portion of our dispatch center, but nothing police related.
All right. Now, one other question, change it. I just wanted to bring it out there so that everybody understands that that's that's expenditures that we have that I look at on a daily basis. And here's another expenditure. We've spent an enormous amount of money on improving our camera system on the Riverwalk and very and even the new Riverwalk and various places downtown. Is this, this is going to be have to be hired. We looked at that at all, what we're building a new building and what that's going to cost. That could cost a considerable amount of money, the technology. Because now you have, now you've got cameras, and I'd like to come see that sometime, of everything, which is great. It's a great police tool. But have we considered that the move of that is another extensive cost?
Well, it's not because we don't, it's not right now. It's not because although the cameras are getting installed, we're still going through the process of building out a real-time crime center. But understand when I say build out a real-time crime center that helps monitor those cameras. It's not so much about hardware. It's more about software. And as you know, software, you can turn it on here and then you can shut it off and turn it on over there. And hardware is pretty easily moved. And so we're actually looking at that entire project with an eye towards how mobile is this? And let's ensure that we don't do anything that would hamper that yet facilitate that.
I wouldn't want that to be interrupted.
And that's that's exactly what the chief and I've talked about is is if we do move, how do you make it where it's not costing that extra layer of bureaucracy and cost? And Chief, address the, it doesn't cost, didn't cost a million dollars to move our dispatchers over to the on top of your budget.
No, it costs us nothing to move.
Nothing.
The dispatch operation personnel is a million, like a million one or something.
In budget every year.
Employees, salaries.
Equipment.
Equipment, everything is over a million dollars.
I and I will just tell you, I'm not going to speak for the county, but I.
I know. We love to have our own 911 services.
Not only could they do.
Could they be combined? Yes, they could.
Not at this point, they couldn't.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city administrator to begin the RFP process and obtain an architecture, engineer, and design firm for the proposed EOC police annex facility.
Amendment. Can we drop police annex off? EOC?
Well, it sounded, I mean, I still want police to be able to be.
They're going to be, EOC is going to, I mean, we've had this discussion. EOC is going to involve police and fire. That's just.
Well, I thought the annex was for the the evidence.
Could we at least have the latitude to explore what police functions may be well-suited for that combined operation? I think it is EOC primarily, but as Chief made a fairly good argument for, there are certain police functions that could be beneficial. And you guys make the decision. What I'm asking for right now is $50,000. So I mean, that's what it is. And no, you're right.
Wait, wait. Now, the chief just said she wants to store some stuff over there that, you know, has fumes and stuff like that. It's like that. This is, this is an EOC building, not a hazardous storage area.
It's it's twofold. We're looking for an area for secure storage. That's number one. And again, we have it in a lot of different places around the city. And it'd be good to get some of the larger bulk storage combined. Secondly, we're looking for a place to house our three-member CSI group. And they need room and they need open space to do what they do because of the technical nature of, and when I say fumes, this isn't something that smokes out a building or what have you. But they need things that that require some good room. They need big air vent hoods because of the chemicals that they use to find fingerprints and to find blood splatters, all that kind of stuff. I also feel like that's a good central location for them. It would provide, no matter what we do, there needs to be people present. People need to be there. It's that's what maintains a building. That's what keeps things, you know, the air going, what have you. If we're going to have evidence there, we always want to have people or cameras or whatnot on site to help facilitate all that intake and, you know, pushing it out to folks. And so I really don't see one independent group. I see our CSI folks, bulk storage. We talk about that humongous bay that we have there. To this day, we have to, we have to rent or borrow a place if we get a car that's involved in a crime. We have no place to process that. And this is Florida with the rain and 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 that may not seem important to you unless it's a traffic homicide where somebody died and we have to spend three days picking apart a car and picking apart a grill. That's a great location. It pulls right in. It's already covered. It's already, it's set up. The infrastructure is already set up. That's why we were attracted to this to begin with. One side secure for EOC, some small rooms, another side with a huge bay. That's what attracted both the chief and I is how this could be dual purpose. I would hate to see us waste an opportunity for a facility that could meet a lot of our needs right now.
And this would be probably more economical than adding into the new facility long term because it's going to cost a lot more per square foot.
Considerably, considerably more economical.
You're not adding more staff. This is existing staff.
That's considerably more economical.
And we have a motion on the floor.
And I will, I will second it if if we can look at calling this the proposed EOC public safety facility with potentially other city needs.
Done.
I mean, that's, that's.
Is that okay with you, Ms. Coker?
It seems like that's whatever I want.
Okay.
I think that's good.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, because if it was going to be police annex, I was going to vote against it. So I just.
So hearing none, vote, start the vote in Ward 1?
Yes.
2?
Yes.
3?
Yeah.
4?
I'd like to see a, and I've asked you this as a public record, so I will make a record of this meeting. What we are spending on all these studies, I've just added up probably three quarters of a million dollars. So I will both know.
Okay, Ms. Coachman?
Yes.
So passes 4 to 1. Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Next matter, and we're getting down to the end of the list, is the proposed Public Works Annex Facility. As council knows, we had purchased that property on 9th Street across from LeCom and across from the Crowley Site. There were some questions that council didn't know anything about that we were ready and prepared to to actually start developing a Public Works Annex to get out of the Crowley Site and the issues surrounding that building, the habitability of the building. So what I had my team do was go back and we actually found the budget from 2021. And you'll see that that is highlighted here. There is a line item basically under item number 40251210, which is A&E Design for New Building at $200,000. It's already been funded, the architecture and engineering. It was approved by, and I think that budget was was approved 5 to 0. And I assume that, you know, there's a lot of details in the budget. So there's a lot of things sometimes I don't even know that's in there that I probably had something to do with putting it in because there's just so much material in it and everything. But I wanted to prove up basically that had been discussed, it is in the budget.
Mr. Sanders?
I am the only one that has actually asked for more details and more information on our budget process. We have a bad history of throwing items on the budget, and the budget book is this big. It's hard to read it. It's hard to understand it for some people, and it's time consuming. And I didn't realize this is in here. And my my background is finance for 40-plus years. So I have a hard time finding some of this detail without having a extended conversation with it for the public. So now you're just, you just, I'm glad you mentioned this. This I did not know was in there. But you say, well, we voted on, we always vote 5 0 on the budget.
No, sir, that did not happen sometimes.
All right, all right, please let me finish. We need, I want more transparency. This to me is is the lack of transparency to that because I feel.
No, 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 no. Thank you. Continue, please. I'll address it.
Okay, I just feel that I didn't know this because of my ignorance to to read detail in the budget. And then I voted on something that that this is a major item. How much is, I can't read it, 200?
$200,000.
How much?
200,000.
200, that's a big number. That should have been brought out as a separate issue to be voted on separately. That's my point.
Mr. Perry?
It was actually a slide during the budget presentation that went over this project and included it. It was about as transparent as as clear glass. Now, I agree with partially what you said as it relates to the potential of missing things. I don't want to call it ignorance alike. I admit that I'd do the same thing. Budget's lengthy, and and I don't think it's any different here than it is in other fairly good-sized governments, local governments, where you don't know everything. If I asked you what is in his capital plan from last year, the $6 million, I would venture to say that both you and I would probably know maybe 50% of it on a good day. Maybe. This isn't any sleight of hand. And and the insinuation that it's not transparent or that it was otherwise not brought to the attention. Any shortcoming associated with that is an individual shortcoming, in my opinion. And I'll leave it at that.
And then, well, I'm going to say one thing. Mr. McCollum came up at at least, I believe, in two or maybe three times to bring this up. When we purchased the property, it was brought to this council and told what the property was going to be for. And and I agree with the concept of when you look through the budget book. But I took the time, and I know others did, to thumb through each part of that budget book. And do I remember this line item specifically? Maybe not. But do I remember the conversations we had? Yes, definitely. Mrs. Barnaby, then Mrs. Coker.
Thank you. There have been numerous times in the city's history that the budget was not approved 5 0. There, I remember very specifically one year where the administration refused to put a budget together and the council sat down with the department heads and put a budget together. I also was very happy when I came back on the council and we started the budget process. We had these department heads in front of us with their budgets, with the highlights of the budgets, the priorities for what they were trying to get accomplished for our citizens from every department. That had never happened before. And it happened when we had this project, this budget. I remember specifically Mr. McClellan talking about we have to get the design done for the budget as part of this budget. So and and I'm not, I am not saying that every council member needs to know and memorize every line item in a budget, particularly one as large as ours. However, we have budget workshops that are public. We have two budget hearings that are held after 5 o'clock in the evening that are public meetings that we are required to do that by law. We have been transparent with our budget.
Ms. Coker?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, while I might not have remembered exactly what that number was, to sit here and say that you didn't know that we're looking at building a new Public Works building just seems disingenuous. And to sit here and say that we're not transparent is actually, again, I just take exception to it. And I remember Mr. McClellan, who spent a good bit of time for his presentation. And to, I mean, I'm just, I'm done. I mean, it's not, it's very transparent. If you don't know that it was there, you know, it's not their fault.
So we're looking for a motion, Mr. Perry, to approve?
I'll make a motion. I'm on a roll.
I don't think so. I think it was just.
Is that just information?
The air, some information on that.
Okay, I'll motion, I'll make a motion to authorize the city administrator to negotiate with Folly Bryant to provide architecture and engineering designs for the proposed Public Works Annex. Second.
Have a motion and a second.
$150,000 in there.
200,000.
Right there, it's in budget.
That's the wrong one? Oh, I'm sorry, 200.
Yes, 200.
Right here.
In the budget.
And it is budgeted. This is not new money. It's in the budget.
And and in that recommendation to us, there was something that was proposed to for the council to consider is the remodeling of the existing building. And we have not discussed that. And why not?
That was provided to you at the last council meeting or two council meetings ago. I dug it up from 2019. It had four options with estimated cost. I'm sure you tediously looked at that and are intimately familiar with each and every detail of option 1, 2, 3, and 4. Option 1 was a remodel. Option 1, 2 was trying to use some portable buildings. Option 3, I forget about. Option 4 was a new building.
Something like that.
It was provided to you, sir.
Yes, I understand. But I didn't, I'd never seen that document until you presented it to us.
I believe you came to the council in 2018. I believe the document was generated 2019.
I was on the council in 2019. So that you're saying it was presented in 2019?
I believe that was the date that it was commissioned.
Sir, could you please come to the microphone? I can't.
I'm sorry, I believe that was the date.
2019?
Yeah. I hadn't seen it. I had to dig it up.
Here's what I do. I apologize to you at the next meeting. If Tamara, her clerk, can show me that that was presented at a council meeting that's either recorded or in the minutes. Because I'm sorry, I don't remember it, but I will apologize to everybody for saying that I don't remember, but I don't remember. So I would just ask for a public record for when that was decided on. And if if it was there, it's there. And I'll say I owe everybody an apology for not understanding. That's that's all I'm going to say.
Fair enough. And I don't, I don't, no apology necessary.
I apologize. I don't understand what the request is.
First of all, we started, Mr. Callahan and I discussed with others the purchase of that land across from Lincoln Park, Pirates Park.
The Tarpon X Properties?
Yes, that's what it's called, Tarpon X. And I believe we paid 360,000.
Excellent, that's right.
Excellent, 3, I believe the number is 3. So that would be a starting point from there. And then there up to, when was the, at what meeting? And just show me the document. At what meeting did we discuss that this property? See, we went on, this was always called a sign shop. We are buying this to move the sign shop over. That's all I ever heard. And I'm sorry, Ms. Barnaby, and and the three of you weren't here. Is Mr. Roth, I want to ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Is that not what you understood?
That is, that is what was stated.
That was what was stated. So I'd ask we not vote on that till I get this information.
Well, it doesn't matter. I mean.
Well, I guess it doesn't matter.
You're right, you're right, sir. Look, I do remember that property purchase and all that. Those were days that I didn't agree with those days. There was, and I did make sure that there was not CRA funds used for that because it was not coming from the CRA. But this is not that now. This is, we're moving in a whole new direction here. So I mean, I understand your point, and you're and you're right. But but we're now at a new stage in life.
I got it.
So and I want to move forward. I'm not, I'm not going to complain about the old bit.
I'm just trying to get to the big picture.
You're right that we, it came, it came.
I have the right to know that.
It came from nowhere, and it was offered by a sign shop. You're right. But I'd like to vote on this.
All right, so I would ask Mrs. Melton to get that information because we are so also, Jim, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we're talking about two different pieces of property here. One piece was the ex-sign shop. The other piece was the other piece of property that this board voted voted to purchase knowing the reason we were purchasing it. And those will be.
The second piece.
The second piece. But what you're talking about is something different than the second piece where we're talking about putting the annexation. And that will be in the minutes.
Is that beside this?
They're next to each other.
Yes, they're budding properties.
Right, yes. So and that was, and and those will be in the minutes.
So the excellent property was purchased with the intent, as was discussed, to put the sign shop and the meter shop into the building. And the initial thought was that it was going to be a temporary fix until we built the new building. And as part of that, we had Folly Bryant do, it was a $17,000 study back in 2019 to develop the concepts for different options for what we could do for a new building. In that period of time, the property next door, which originally was going to be a an ethnic grocery store, that they cleared the lot. And then their development plan fell through and the property became available. And it came back before council as, let's buy this property because then it becomes a viable option for us. And so the move to the sign shop then became a permanent thing rather than a temporary thing into the excellent building. So if you look at the plans that were presented to you, the sign shop and the meter shop were part of a new building. That's no longer necessary. So the size of that building is need to be significantly smaller, putting on the property next to the excellent property. And as part of all of that, what wasn't looked at was what's the value of the annexed property associated with it becoming available for whatever the city desires?
And we don't have that for us?
No, no.
So this property you're suggesting was another property we bought. How much did we pay for that?
I, sorry, I don't know off the top of my head.
We can have all that information for you.
I just want the information that I, like I said.
But it was, it was voted on by council to do that.
That was brought in there. All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're going to start the vote. Hearing none, we're going to start the vote in Ward two?
Yes.
Three?
Yeah.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Carrie's four to one. Mr. Perry?
Last matter, second to last, we may table the last one, but the Regatta MOU, I believe, is on there under new business.
Mr. Perry, can I, I, I just look through this?
Yes, sir.
And what disturbs me is nowhere in there does it talk about the TDC money coming in? It says that we have the installment of fifty thousand dollars apiece, but it does not specify that we're going to be spending, that's the TDC money that we're going to be spending. So, we could potentially be putting ourselves on the hook for two hundred thousand dollars without the specification of the TDC giving us the two hundred thousand first, so we're doing a pass through.
Think I understand.
So, I, I don't like this right now, without that being said.
Also, I've asked for.
Unless it's in there.
I think it is under one. I looked at this beforehand.
Where is it?
And I apologize, on, on page two, city agrees, the city will operate as a dispersment entity. So, we're basically a fiscal agent to commence after Manatee County Tourist Development Council and Board of County Commissioners' approvals.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Yep. And I did too. I actually looked at that to see, well, are we a fiscal agent? Are we a program manager? Or what are we, and everything? And I, I feel pretty comfortable that because of the way that language is stacked, saying that we'll do the dispersed, we're a dispersment entity, and, and that to commence after the, the TDC and Board of County Commissioners' approvals.
Okay.
Yep.
It's all reimbursement.
Yeah.
The reason that, that it needs to come now is because the timing of sponsorships, they can build the sponsorship to actually build the event in a better way. And again, it's, it was, you can read in there, this year, they guesstimated ninety plus or minus thousand people, and the economic impact was eleven point four million dollars from the group that came back. And, and again, talking to the downtown businesses and what they do, you know, some of those businesses, the smaller ones right now coming out of COVID, and even before, this weekend helps them maybe pay two or three months of their rent, and then they can, so, you know, their costs. So, it's definitely something that obviously you've known all along since day one, I've been supportive of, and I just think it's the way we do it. I ask our, everyone, Jim McCollum, I ask the chief, I ask all that, because some of the comments that have came up before about the cost of what we pay for it, and, and it's more about the overtime and, and that, and they both said that it still was streamlined right where we were. Nothing's really changed at that, and, and there was no issues coming out of it. You know, it wasn't any big change or issues.
I was, I was just concerned, I was looking through it, I didn't see the TDC contribution, so I was just looking at our.
No, that's very important, because that would, I would not be supportive of us paying two hundred thousand. Now.
Questions?
Other questions? Mr. Sanders?
This contract is with a private promoter, correct?
Well, the MOU.
The MOU. It's not a contract. That's, that's another issue. It's a memorandum of understanding, which is not a valid contract. That's number one. But MOUs are questionable in court of law. They, they've been tested, and they don't, they, most of the time, don't hold up.
I won't challenge your legal acumen.
All right. So, thanks. That's a fifteen minutes. We don't know what this private entity is doing. We don't know who he's bringing to the show. We don't have copies of contracts, which, this is public money being spent. Manatee County through DTC has given us two hundred thousand dollars. Good for them. That's great. But now, the city is putting in additional monies with police, fire, public works, a very expensive event for us. That always has been questioned since I've been here as to how much that is. So, I've asked for that information. It has not been provided. We always get that information before we vote on this. So, I would ask that we table this until we at least get that information, and then we should discuss what we want in this contract that protects us from insurance, protects us from any other liabilities. I've had complaints by vendors. One just told me at the ballpark that they spent fifteen hundred dollars for a one-day spot, and he said, "I lost money." So, I'm, I'm opposed to this. I, I don't think we've had public input on it, and we got public money going into it to the tune of three, four hundred thousand dollars. I don't think we should be doing that. We should go, if, if anything, we should go back to the TDC and say, "Look, you've got to cover all the costs of, of police, fire, public works, because we don't want to absorb this, because we're doing it for the taxpayers." So, we, basically, it does, it's not a free event, it's a cost event. So, I would like to table this until we get more information to discuss it, and actually have a binding contract, not an MOU.
Mayor, may I be heard?
Yes, sir.
I think what's happening is we're conflating what's before the council. What is before the council is an MOU that basically makes us a fiscal agent. It doesn't have us do, or obligate us, whether it's a contract, a tablet from on high, or an MOU, doesn't really matter. It's an agreement. And, and what that does, basically, is it says, "You're a fiscal agent. Soon as these tell, people tell you that to pay the bill, and we give you the money to pay the bill, you pay the bill." The city of Albuquerque did it all the time. The state legislature would give us money, and we would give it to the Holocaust museum. We had nothing to do with the Holocaust museum. Now, your issues with the event itself, and both the direct and the indirect financial contributions, whether it's a good economic development tool for the businessman you talk to, or anything else that's either relevant or tangical, sure, bring it up, but that's not what's before the council right now.
We don't have any responsibility if someone gets hurt, vote gets out of control.
Not before the council.
You don't think they're going to sue the city of Bradenton?
Uh, not before the council. I, I couldn't give you my, I don't have the same legal acumen, and, and it would take me to probably confer and do research and give a considered legal opinion to answer that question. What I'm telling you is before us is a MOU to act as a fiscal agent. I'm going to keep.
I understand.
Keep it narrow.
We're named as a sponsor.
Going to stay on point, focused.
We're named as a sponsor, I think was tied to the, legally to the event that something happened. We are, I'm telling you, a, a, a good attorney will say, "You were responsible for what happened to the public."
Appreciate the comments from my esteemed co-council on the dais. I'm not sure which to answer. Yes, I mean, there's potential liability to the city anytime we have an event in the city of any kind. So, I would expect that's going to be addressed. I, I assume there's going to be a special permit at some point that they would come forward with, and that's when all those issues are reviewed by the committee, PD, fire, risk management. But again, that, Mr. Perry's right, that what's before the council today is a memorandum of understanding that relates to the city being a pass through for the money from the TDC.
Just one comment. I appreciate being called co-council. You did, and, and before you called me the watchdog, I, I kind of like that, too. So, I don't know which one to, but could the, could the council give me half of your salary here? If I'm co-council, I'd like to have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
May I entertain a motion?
Okay, I'd like to, I would like to make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding as it relates to the fiscal relationship for the 2023 Bradenton River Regatta. Is that sufficient?
Mr. Perry?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you need?
I believe.
Okay.
There a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We've had a lot of debate. Is there any more?
Uh, just, this is too much risk for the city to take, to hand over to a private enterprise that doesn't live in this city. I would be voting no.
All right, we'll start the vote in Ward three?
Yeah.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Thank you. Carrie's four to one. Mr. Perry?
Last matter of business, Mr. Kelly, give a quick update. I'm going to pass it. It shouldn't take any more than about three minutes. An update on our external audit. I know that transparency and accountability and compliance with certain standards, not an individual, but those that are really generally accepted, like the state auditor, they're important, and that's what this audit does. And so, take it from there, Mr. Kelly. Tom Kelly, Finance Director, Steve Bradenton.
Thank you. Yes, on Friday, Mr. Perry, Linda Guth, Senior Accountant, and I met with Jeff Gerhardt, the Audit Partner with CSNL, and his Audit Manager, Jennifer Raffino Cook. They went over the five audit reports that are in our annual comprehensive financial report. I'll give you the opinion. It's a kind of a quote. It's in our opinion, based on our audit and the report of the other auditors. The financial statements present fairly in all material respects to respective financial position of the governmental activities, business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city as of September 30th, 2021, and the respective changes in financial position and where applicable, cash flows thereof for the year-end in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. The bottom line of it is, this is an unmodified audit opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that can be provided, that the financial statements comply with GAAP, generally accepted auditing standards. The next report, that was the independent auditor's report. The next one is Report on Internal Control and Compliance. They test our internal controls, things like, do we have segregation of duties? Do we have proper signatures on everything? Is our workflows appropriate for accounts payable? Do wires that we transfer out, do they have a second set of eyes on them and a second approver? We have all those things. So, during their audit, they, they did not identify any deficiencies in internal control or non-compliance that they considered to be material weaknesses, so that's a positive. The next report is the federal single audit report. We received over one point eight million dollars in federal awards in fiscal year 2021. There's a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold where the auditors have to do testing of major programs of those audits. They found no areas of non-compliance. Everything was fine with those. That's an extremely important part of the audit, because if you're not complying with the grant requirements in these federal awards, the federal government can request the money back that they've given you. So, it's important that we do everything properly with those grants. There was a management letter that they supplied, that basically, they check you against Florida Statute 218.503 regarding financial emergency. We're a long way from a financial emergency. We're in good financial condition. They stated that to us in the exit interview, and we have significant financial reserves, so another positive. And then, the last report they do is an independent accountant's report on investment compliance. We follow the city's investment policy that's been improved by council, so we're invested in very safe things. We're in, we're in money markets, we're in some CDs, and we're in two managed bond portfolios to get a little bit more yield overall. So, and those two bond funds are overseen by Burgess Chambers, who also works with the pension plans and so forth. So, we're in good shape there, good, clean opinion on that. There was audit finding where we, it was kind of an oversight on two grant funds at the end of the year. We were over budget, so they had to report on that. And then, the debt service fund was over budget by four hundred and eighty-five dollars, but because it was over, it had to be reported on. So, anyway, that was an oversight in finance that usually I do a year-end cleanup, those two things, got, the three things got overlooked. So, that was just one of those where, "Don't do it again" type of thing. And right now, I'm working on the CRA audit and financial statements. That's almost complete. The auditors have a few outstanding items to cover with the CRA, and then I'll complete the financials, and then those will be all set. So, I'm expecting another clean audit opinion on those. That's something new, that we do separate financial statements for the CRA. Last year was the first time we had to do that, but now that's going to be an ongoing thing, new state requirements. So, does anyone have any questions regarding this?
Of course I do.
Mr. Sanders?
Is this the internal, or the external auditor that we've hired annually that's been on contract for year after year?
Yeah, he's been with us, I think, since 2017.
2017. Have we looked at possibly, when, when is that contract up? Do you know?
It's kind of year to year at this point.
So, but we have to vote on it every year. Isn't, isn't it a good idea to change auditors every two to three years for?
There's different schools of thought on changing auditors. I mean.
But, but isn't that a true statement? And it's a good idea?
I, I think that there's different schools of thought. Some people would say that because of familiarity with these, you know, entities finances, that and historical knowledge of, of problems, that it's sometimes beneficial to keep the same people for continuity, succession, and the like. Other people think that you bounce it back and forth, and you get a new set of eyes, completely independent. I, I think people in the accounting world, the GAAP world, and, and audit world have nice debates over a cocktail about this, and really have never come to an agreement, you know?
I always keep bringing up Arthur Andersen, one of the world's largest accounting firms, and Enron. They no longer exist.
Right.
Because they kept continually saying, "Public, it's okay, it's okay," and everybody lost billions of dollars.
But those are falsified financial statements, that you're absolutely right, should have been revealed through procedures of GAAP and external audit. You are right about it.
But you have to have thrust in your accounting firm.
Yep.
And that was the largest accounting firm in, probably in the world.
Right.
Okay. So, and I'm not comparing us to that.
I know.
So, let's don't, let's don't get off on a tangent there. But it is a, a good procedure to have a rotation of accounting firms that look at our financials. And they look at only certain stuff from year to year that we're told, that we asked them to look at. They don't look at procurement processes, capital expenditures, contracts that, that in compliance with council approvals. They don't look at a lot of that data. Is that true?
They don't dig into it. They sample things, but they don't dig into it thoroughly. I mean, that would add to the cost tremendously if they had to.
Absolutely. But we could ask them to look into, say, the MOU of, of Regatta, and what that actually costs the city.
I'll take a shot at that one. Actually, most, most accounting firms would, would decline to do that. They'd say, "We do the external audit. What you're talking about is an internal audit function." That's what CRI did. I enlisted them, as you remember, are the risk auditors. They've done some of that already. Now, you're talking about a more detailed called the performance audit, which you could do. But that's a different type of audit than this. This, this is just saying that the financial statements are, are true, accurate, and, and done in accordance with GAAP procedures and GASB. That's basically it. Generally accounted, accounting principles and government accounting standards, GASB.
I, I understand, done it a lot. And I'm glad you mentioned CRI. That was another contract, I believe, twenty-four thousand?
Yeah, I know you didn't like that one, but, but.
I don't like the money, but I haven't seen the report yet.
That'll be coming very shortly.
So, that was last September. This is September, October, November, December, about nine months. And when will we get that?
Well, I, I forget when they started.
I think it's September 21st.
At work. I can't remember exactly when they started the work. I think you.
I don't know when they started.
You're betting it within, I don't know, thirty days or so.
Because they came around to each council person and did a, a, what would you like Because they came around to each council person and did a, what would you like to see type conversation, and I gave them a pretty good list. And of course, so I'm gonna be looking for that. But I thought that was a great idea, because you, as a new city administrator, I saw you wink. I, you know, the new is, I don't know if that, what that meant, but.
You know my text?
Yeah, yes, I would, I would like to, I would like to have your text when you text to somebody. Absolutely, every time. You can have mine.
Very good.
Good, good. That's, that's the way it's supposed to work. And so, you lost my train of thought here, sir. I understand that you wanted to have some clearance that nothing happened until you got here that was inappropriate, or nefarious, or whatever. I understand that I would do the same thing, so that the books are clean when I take over. Anything that happens from this date forward is on me. I got it, and I agree with you. That's, that was the intent behind it.
It wasn't the only purpose.
Wasn't the only purpose, but we'd never done this before, ever. We'd never done, Mr. Tom, you've been here long.
No.
Have we ever done this before?
We have not.
We have not, that's right. Okay, so I'm happy to, I want to see that report and go over it.
Thank you. And Mr. Perry's wink, was that me? I'll take that, because the first day Mr. Perry walked in this building, I said, Mr. Perry, to be totally transparent from the previous administration to this administration, we want to see what's on the books, and let the books go, and, and, you know, that's something that, that I felt that as coming in as mayor, I would have probably done in January, but knowing that Mr. Callahan was retiring in June, there's no reason to spend the money before to do it. So it was very transparent. Everything that, that, since I started as mayor, January of last year, has been transparent, and going to get the extra step to make sure that we're doing all that we approved today, which I appreciate. But one of the things, if you go with some of the models that we've heard today, you better be looking for a job, Tom. Because, you know, you change out every two or three years, so, you know, you know, and I'm saying that tongue-in-cheek, but, you know, when you have something good, you make sure you oversee it, but you also make sure you're checking with the staff and doing that. And if something sticks out, you know, because again, some of the things that I brought up right away with you, and some of the things we sign and go through, we want to make, how do I know somebody's not doing something below me?
Right.
Well, you've got the checks and balances. First thing Mr. Perry did was bring in, is a department head letter, that each department head, before I sign anything, has to be go through the checks. Now, if somebody's a crook, they're a crook, they're still a crook.
Right.
You know, but we've got to make sure checks and balances, that's what these accountants do.
That's right. And I didn't suggest that, Tom, the most intangible guy that I know, would be changed out every two to three years. I said, external auditors that the public has to trust. That's our mechanism for these reports, that when they sign their name at the bottom, they have complied with GAAP, which is accounting processes. And, but sometimes mistakes are made because, not necessarily mistakes, but because they didn't look for enough, and because they weren't directed to. And some, and the city council does have the right to ask them to look into certain items, which I think we should be doing as part of their audit, and ask them what it costs to do that. And you're saying that's an internal audit. We don't have internal auditors here. We could hire one, that, but maybe to add another $10,000 onto this audit would be money well-spent versus maybe $100,000 for an internal auditor.